Good morning, everyone. Time has come for us to have our Thursday morning county commissioner meeting this Thursday, May 29th, 2025, here in the commission chambers. And we will start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, on the agenda today, oh, first of all, I better introduce everybody, right? Okay, those of us that are actually in attendance. To my, I am Candace Payne. I'm the Chair of this commission. To my immediate left is Mr. Tom Rolfe, Commissioner.
Good morning, Chair Payne.
Good morning. And Brandy Spangler is our person who keeps us in line. I didn't want to use the term whip, but you know, she pretty much calls it around here. To my immediate right is Commissioner Andy Hunthausen, Deputy County Attorney Keven Shay, and Mr. Roger Balls, the CAO. What does CAO stand for again?
Chief Administrative Office.
You'd think I'd have it. Three years and I-
No worries, Commissioner.
Okay. I'm not good with acronyms. I know I'm not. At first, do you have any consent action items?
Chair Payne, we do not. No items today.
Well, the first item on our agenda this morning is the fiscal year 2026 budget presentation. And the first one is for the county attorney's office from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. And I think we're going to have to take a recess until our very busy, possibly absent-minded county attorney arrives to explain how he wants to spend money in the next year. So we'll take a 20-minute recess, hoping he will be here by then. Okay, I'm going to continue the recess. Good morning. We are, we have been on a 20-minute recess. And we are going to continue the recess until 10:00 a.m. No, yeah, 10:00 a.m. And this, there's been some, some kind of miscommunication between us and the county attorney. And we are pretty darn flexible. We try to get along with the county attorney. Anyway, this, we will be in recess until 10 o'clock, at which time we will reconvene and continue with this process. See you at 10:00. We are ending our brief recess and going to move forward with our fiscal year 2026 budget presentation. And first out of the docket is the county attorney, Mr. Kevin Downs. Come forward. Face the panel. Yep.
Madam Chair, good morning. Thank you very much. Commissioner Rolfe, Commissioner Hunthausen, glad to be here to present our budget today and appreciate, I know there was a little mix-up with the timing, so I appreciate your patience with me getting over here and making sure we all lined up here to go. I think you, like the other departments, you have before you two submissions. One is the budget summary and also the staffing summary. So I'll begin the presentation in reference to the budget summary. Okay? So last year's budget, as far as I understand at this point, has been in almost most, all respects within what our office requested. There's a few categories where, that we're still waiting for the final numbers, but I think we're within range. And overall, the picture for this year's proposed budget is nearly the same scope and position as last year. And so I'll go sort of in order here. Our just personnel updates. We're nearly fully staffed as far as our permanent positions go, so that's, that's really good. We've had, you know, just like other departments, people come and go and retire. So we're glad to say that we're, right now, we're down one criminal attorney position. And then we'll be sad to say goodbye to Kathy Salo, who's been at our front desk for a long time, well before me and well before a lot of our other employees. So we converted her position to a halftime position. That's split with another person, so we'll be hiring her halftime position when she retires at the end of June. So I know she'll be, she's been there a long time and she'll be missed. And then in regards to O and M budget adjustments, I've highlighted in green there, two categories, minor equipment office machines, where we worked with finance to figure out our historical suspending. And I suppose there won't be any objection to decrease requests. So we've asked, it's, you know, $6,000 or so less than what we've done the last couple of years. And I think it's just looking at historical suspending in those categories. So we appreciate finding, working with finance to make sure we're asking what we need and not asking too much. And then the only, the only sort of slight adjustments and increases are labeled in yellow. The one category is office, or excuse me, other purchases and contract services. So I think the commission, commissioners have a good understanding about what that category entails, but I'll just reiterate, just for awareness. So the increase we're requesting is to go up by $20,000. So I think last year we asked for $80,000. We're asking for an additional $20,000. And the reason being is that those are the contract services that we need in both civil and criminal cases.
Did we give you the $80,000 last year?
Yes.
Thank you.
And so I know, I know the commission's well aware of the, the number of civil lawsuits that's, that involves the county. So in some instances, we engage outside counsel, for example, Alan McCormick and other law firms to help with some of those cases. And some of those are ongoing for potentially years. And then obviously, we don't always know what might come this year as far as lawsuits go. So that's one category of why, you know, that we have this budgeted. The other category is some of our criminal cases just take additional resources, and those are just more complex cases. So I know in, two years ago, we had increased this bucket. There was a cold case homicide that was, that was tried here in our district court, and that was about a three to four-week trial. So that took substantial resources. So I know the commission was generous enough to increase that to sort of cover those, what was anticipated costs. And so I, I know we had a, there was a homicide trial that was scheduled for earlier this year, and that ended up getting bumped. So we anticipated that costs being associated for this budget year, but now that has been bumped into the next fiscal year. So right now, that's supposed to go in September. So that was unanticipated. And so I also am aware of there's certain case investigations that are, that are going on that in and out of abundance of caution, wanted to increase this, just out of prudence to make sure that we have enough financial resource to cover those, cover those cases. And there's just cost, those, those costs to, to take those cases to trial or to have them thoroughly investigated and have our case review them. So, so I want to make sure that we have that bucket adequately accounted for.
Chair-
Andy?
Just for explanation purposes, this is, this is important. So just, we let people understand that these are really expensive. I mean, this could be, the kinds of things that could be involved in, in a very complex case could be outside experts that might need to be flown across the country, for example, or whatever, lots of extra investigation into things that maybe aren't typically done. I just, just maybe some explanation. This is not necessarily extraordinary or something that we haven't seen in the past. But I, people don't understand what might go into a complex case like, like you might be seeing here, so.
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioner Hunthausen. So for, thank you, thank you for the question. Examples of expenditures for certain cases, we might need to fly in an expert, an out-of-state for a child sexual abuse case. And we've done that in the past. And where we have experts who are essentially a blind expert for a case to help educate a jury. And we can't have somebody that's involved in the case in those instances where we need a blind expert. We also might have witnesses or victims that are, have since moved out of state. I know we have some county employees. For example, we have someone in the jail who used to work in the jail, has since taken a different position and, and moved states. So they're, they're a witness in the case. We need to fly them in. We also, the forensic science lab, which is located in Missoula in Billings primarily, they do autopsies, among other, DNA analysis, all this. I know one of their medical examiners who conducts autopsies just went, is no longer employed with the crime lab, but is now on contract. So he, then we have to pay for his contract services. So there's a number of instances, this is not every case. These are the ones that are, where there's oftentimes very serious allegations that the state is pursuing in a prosecution. And so the, the difficult part is we can't predict what's going to happen today, or tomorrow, or next week. But we're going on historically knowing what these cases cost, and sometimes that costs a lot. And so the, this, this request of this increase, I think is based upon the historical use of resources in cases like this. Now, the, if we don't use it, then it goes back, goes back to the budget, which, so this request, this $20,000 increase also folds into our request for, and this is somewhat of a unique request, is a rollover of what's left over in this bucket from last year. So right now, I think the, the budget that we've have currently is $65,000 that we haven't used this year. And so that in part is because of some cases that didn't go this year. And so we, we spoke with finance about this and see if that's something the commission would be willing to do, is essentially roll over some of those funds. And again, this is just, we, I know that there's some complex cases that are coming down the pipe here in the next year, perhaps two. And I just want to make sure our office is adequately funded. So that forms the basis of this request.
Thank you.
Now, I have a question. Many of those criminal trial costs, isn't that covered under our insurance?
So I believe, if you're talking about MAKO, I think some of those civil litigation is covered by insurance through MAKO. However, criminal cases are not, not under that. So that's a different category. So we're, we're funded through, you know, taxpayer dollars to help make sure that criminal cases are brought and prosecuted sufficiently. Civil cases, when the county's being sued or a part of a civil litigation, then I think MAKO or other insurance entities can get involved.
So Alan McCormick is a private attorney. Does this county attorney's office contract directly with Mr. McCormick's firm?
Correct. So if it, in some instances, it could be a solo practitioner, so they would contract with that attorney on certain cases. In other, in other circumstances, it might be a law firm, or there might be one or more attorneys involved.
My question is, do the bills go to you, to the county attorney's office? They don't go to MAKO?
On, on the cases where our office engages an attorney to help on, typically it's defending the county in some of these lawsuits, the, the bill goes to our office. And so, and it's paid out of this, this bucket of funds.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So those, the, the last small increase that our office is requesting, and I think this mirrors what the sheriff's office had included, was, which is a small increase of contribution to the Child Advocacy Center in Helena. So I think the commissioners are aware, the Child Advocacy Center is located in, within a where. They have a number of people that work there. And the service that they provide that's critical to our office is that they conduct forensic interviews of children who, where there's concern about allegations of sexual or physical abuse. They're, they're trained, they're experts in interviewing children. And they also provide therapeutic services to families involved in cases like that. And they have a number of other services. So those, their entity is, is critical to our prosecution of, of child sexual abuse victims. And we've, we've been giving, I know the county is very generous to some of our local organizations. We've, we've been contributing $15,000 out of our office budget for a number of years. I know their operating expenses, like everybody else, has gone up. So we just asked for a slight increase of $2,500 on top of the $15,000. And I think the sheriff's office had made a similar request. And, and I, I just can't tell you, the Child Advocacy Centers, we're lucky to have one in Helena. Not every community has one. And, and we're lucky that the CAC here in Helena was actually one of the first in the state. And so we're sort of a, we, they have a great organization and a, and a, and a well-working team. And for our purposes, they help with those prosecutions. So there's a slight increase there. The, I wanted to, so big picture here, the factors that provide the basis for these, these requests is, again, I noted the unpredictability. We don't know what's going to come in today or next week. And the primary focus of our offices is making sure that we're representing the county adequately in legal cases and also seeking justice for those who might be victims in, in our community. So that's the focus. I wanted to express my appreciation. I think I've noted to you perhaps individually for your budget decisions last year for, on behalf of our office. You, you agreed and approved one FTE in our office that was a victim witness coordinator. I think you recall the basis of why we requested that. So I just want to, again, say thank you for, for that request. And I just can't tell you the impact that has on our ability to, to reach out to victims and witnesses in cases. And I think statistics say, but also we, we see it day-to-day, is that when we make contact, this new position, we're able to make contact with victims and witnesses right at the outset of a case. And that actually helps a case move forward in a better and more efficient manner when we can do that. So I just, I want to thank you for that. I just can't tell you, I mean, that every day, we're working with that new employee. And it's actually Trudy Jones who, who's doing an exceptional job. I also wanted just to note where we've transitioned, most of our attorneys now have laptops. And I know that's part of this, some of the IT technology funds. I just can't tell you how, how much that is appreciated in just our day-to-day work in the courts. We also were able to replace our, our old office vehicle this last month. And that was through the capital improvement. So we, we have a new functioning vehicle that we can use for work trips. So I just want to thank you for that. The last document that, or the, the other document that's been provided is the staffing summary. As I noted, we're nearly fully staffed with our permanent positions. And then you can also see on page four is the, we just outlined some of the numbers in regards to the number of cases that our office is handling. And this is just to kind of give you a snapshot of how busy we, we are in both the criminal, civil realm, you know, civil mental, mental civil commitments, juvenile proceedings, dependency neglect cases, juvenile petitions and guardianships. So I'm proud of the team we have, I'm proud of the work that we do. And I think we have, you know, we have, we provide a service like, service to this community like all the other departments. And, you know, being adequately funded certainly helps us to do that. So I'm happy to answer any other additional questions, but I, I appreciate, I know finance has helped us making sure we're making adequate requests here. HR has helped us making sure, Carrie and her team has really helped us get, get staffed in all the work and all the pestering I've had with them. So there's, we have a great team and I'm proud to stand up here and say I represent the county attorney's office. Happy to answer any questions about what I've proposed or anything else.
Good. I've got some questions. Tom, do you have questions?
I'm just-
Is your mic on?
Yeah, I was just a little confused on the way the, the listing, basically we were, we gave you the one extra in the victim witness coordinator last time. You just wanting to continue that one, or you, are you?
Yes. And I, and I, Commissioner, or Madam Chair, Commissioner Rolfe, I think that was essentially a, is my understanding, a permanent position. So that person continues to be employed in our office and was part of our, was part of our budget that's been already presented.
Any further questions, Tom?
Not at this point.
Okay. I have a question. I'm looking at this table. It's page one with the blue printing on the top. And I'm wondering, what is, under actual 2023, there is a number eight with a slash one. What is, what does that indicate?
Oh, I see. That, so I, I guess we're page one of the staffing summary, is that correct?
Yes.
So eight positions, one open, I believe.
But that would make sense if that's what it is. That's what it is?
I believe so. So we have, I think the, the one indicates that there's the vacancy. There's a, there's a, I think it's, I guess in, in reference to the projected 2025, we're down one. And so the-
That position hasn't been filled.
That's correct.
Okay. And is that because no appropriate applicants, or what's the reason?
Madam Chair, so Jessica Best, who was a great employee, she ended up taking a new position with the state. So, so her position, she left a couple of months ago, so we've had that open. We've had some applicants, but we're trying to make sure it's, it's the right fit for what the office needs. So it's essentially a rolling basis. If we, if we receive applicants, then we typically set up an interview panel to review. So I think across the state, there's county attorney's offices, actually across the country, prosecution offices, or county attorneys or district attorney offices have struggled to maintain or hire and retain attorneys. And so I'm, I'm happy where we're at, even though we're still down one.
Okay. Then looking at the deputy county attorney in the, the bottom box, criminal felony slash misdemeanor, it's in 2023, two slash one, 24, the same. That indicates we're short one, and now we're going to try to go up to five, is my understanding that?
Yeah. So, so again, I think it's page one, staffing summary. So we have two categories of deputy county attorneys, and that's based upon experience. So you'll see that, that first box is deputy county attorney two. And generally speaking, that's somebody who has at least five years of experience, of relevant experience. So they would, as a matter of time and experience, would get an increase in pay. And then deputy county attorney one is generally somebody who's either just graduated law school, up to about five years. And there's other factors that go into that. So I think the numbers change is because we have, now we have more deputy county attorney one than we'd have deputy county attorney two. This, I hope I'm answering your, your question.
Thank you for that explanation. Andy, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I, I do have a comment for our fine county attorney and his office. I just wanted to express my gratitude back to you for, you know, the engagement you have with us on the budget. And I think that we've done a great job together, and you're doing all you can with what you have. But I wanted to also say thank you for your engagement with all of what could be considered extra. It's, it's part of the system, but you know, with Criminal Justice Services and the Detention Center and trying to address the system as overall, trying to make us more efficient and, I guess, move forward and take, take consideration and opportunity for all of those new things that come along and the new ways of doing business and maybe improving old way, from old ways and all of that. So I appreciate your, your engagement in that and being willing to talk about it and spend time, because you don't really have any extra time and you, you engage anyway. And I really appreciate that. And I think it's going to be the better for all of us and the community. And I also wanted to say thank you for these gentlemen that spend time with us, Keegan and, and Nico.
And that other guy.
They really, they really are great.
Keegan and that other guy.
Keegan and Nico, I said.
I know.
Yeah, the other guy, right. They're, they're great. And they, they are very responsive. And I think all of the departments would say that, of course, there are only two people. So when you're looking at, you know, essentially 14 other departments and offices that are asking them questions every day and wanting a contract looked at or whatever it might be, I think they do a great job. They're very responsive and helpful in every question we have typically. So thank you for that. And I just, I just appreciate our relationship, and I think you've brought a responsible budget to us. And I'm happy to move on here, so.
But I still have questions. On the back page of this, the, the blue cable, the staffing summary, workload measures, could, I'm looking at this, is that, that's by case or trial or number of hours they need to work on it? Or how, what do these numbers mean?
So, Madam Chair, you're, we're looking at the staffing summary submission, the, the page four workload measures, is that correct?
Correct.
So this, this is a snapshot of actual number of cases that our office handles in these categories. So I'll start at the top. So new felony case filings, so this year we had 510 new felony cases. So that means if somebody was-
A second. That was for two, 2024?
Excuse me, 2024, correct.
Okay.
Felony, so I'll move to the next category, Madam Chair. Felony PTR, so PTR is, is called a petition to revoke. So that, that happens when, if somebody's on supervision, either probation or parole. Usually, excuse me, it's probation where they've, something has, there's an allegation that they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing on supervision. So that could be a new arrest, or they're having difficulty showing up to their probation office. So our office, if, if the original case stemmed from Lewis and Clark County, we file those on behalf of probation and parole, the Department of Corrections. So those are essentially post guilty, and they're, it's some allegation while they're on supervision. Mental commitments, that we refer to them as DI's. I think the commissioners are, you're well aware of these. This is when someone is, someone is having, generally speaking, a mental health crises, and they're not safe to be, to others or themselves. And then our office is engaged with a mental health professionals to petition a court to have them sent to a, a behavioral health place. Generally speaking, it's the Montana State Hospital. Obviously, there's issues there. Abuse and neglect, those are, our office represents the state, the Department of Public Health and Human Services, if there's allegations of abuse and neglect. So we, we initiate those proceedings in district court. We have a, we have a standalone attorney that handles those cases.
Do you have any idea why the abuse and neglect cases have gone down significantly since 2021? Are they using a different, are they sending them? Why has it gone down so much?
Yeah, Madam Chair, it's a question I think that I don't have a great answer for, but it's just the fluctuation of those referrals to our office. You know, whether it continues to go, go down this year, I don't know. But I think across the state, and I don't want to misstate, but I think across the state, the reports to CPS or Child Protective Services has gone down. And that, there's probably a lot of factors why or how come. But that's, you know, we, if the referrals aren't happening, then our office doesn't generally get engaged. So anyway, if you go down the line, these are just the, the number of filings for these types of proceedings. If that, Madam Chair, if that somewhat answers your questions.
Yes, it does. I, I have another question regarding, and we're on the list, that is- That is, it has a account name, account string, all the years and a current description. And the one I'm looking at is the motor vehicle. And the, so is this the cost of operating it? Or what is the $1,500 in this year's budget? You see what I'm talking about? It's, it's one right before the staffing summary. The page right before.
And is this, is it the account 3630? Madam Chair?
What, just a second? Yes, correct.
Madam Chair, so that's sort of a general category of motor vehicles. As I noted, we, we have an office vehicle. We were fortunate to, I know we put some money away for a number of years to purchase a new vehicle. So we have to maintain that car like the other department. So that's oil changes or any repairs that might need to happen. I'm hopeful that, I know the, the vehicle comes with a couple of oil changes for free. If it needs snow tires, various things to make sure we can get around safely or our employees can get around safely. So that's, that's what we've budgeted for, for years just to make sure that if there's any run ins with, with car problems.
Okay, thank you.
Chair Payne?
Tom?
When you're done.
I am finished, Tom. Do you have questions?
We're, I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with about a seven and a half percent increase from, from the last biennium and I, or the last annual budget. And I, we're expecting to get somewhere around, you know, a three percent. And I'm, I'm struggling with getting, getting to a seven and a half percent bump. And is, is there some, some flexibility there that would help us get to a, closer to a three percent bump for, for your budget?
And, Madam Chair, Commissioner Rolfe, and are you, are you talking about for the increase somewhat?
The total amount here. We're going from 300, 3,724, 724,000 to a little over 4 million. And that's about a seven and a half percent bump. If we were to keep it more in the hundred and, a three percent bump, but we'd be somewhere in the neighborhood of 3,840. So it'd be a, it would be about 160,000 less than what you're, what you're proposing.
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioner Rolfe, so I, so the, my understanding is that some of the accounted for increases are that which was, go across the board for every department. So I think there's a COLA that's anticipated. So all the employees, there, we have-
They're, they're at about two percent, 2.1. You're going to have some flexibility because you got people moving up in steps and whatnot. But, but if we can get closer to that, three percent, it helps us, you know, in each of the budgets, it helps us to, to make the whole, whole package work, you know, without raising property taxes much, you know?
Yeah, no, I, Madam Chair, Commissioner Rolfe, I understand. So some of the increases are out of our department's control. So IT costs, we don't have control over that. That's set by IT. The health insurance costs, those are also out of our control. And I know those, my understanding is those costs have gone up. So the only, as far as the increases that we have, I think the only increase on paper from last year is, it's $16,000. Because we're asking, we ask for a decrease. We're asking for a decrease of $6,000 in our minor equipment and office machines. And the only other increase is 22,500. So it's, the difference is $16,500. So those are the buckets that we have control over as far as requesting. So I think my, at least my understanding is we're not asking for huge amounts of excess in any of these categories from last year. The only increase I think that would be reflective of your question is the approval of one full-time employee from last year that was a permanent employee. And I think, I know that was a decision made last year. And I, I believe that there was, I, I hope I provided enough justification about why that was critical to making sure that our victims are being adequately treated in this community. So I, my, my understanding, Commissioner Rolfe, is that most of these, whatever increase there is, if it's seven percent, that's, a lot of that is out of our department's control.
There, the, your operations and maintenance budget is bumping from 259 to 366, which is, which is kind of where, where mostly the, the problem is. And that's, and a lot of that's, and, and to a large degree, it's, it's the other contracted services and other purchases. Looking on the last, last item there. Now, that's, that's kind of the, that's, that's the deal. And I think, I guess we talked about some, some contracted services that you expect to be, you know, kind of a one-time thing? Is that what you're, you're thinking?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Rolfe, so I, I think, well, as far as this, I think the commissioner, I think you're aware of the civil litigation against the county. Okay, some of that is known. Some of that, some of those cases have been ongoing, some for years. And so those expenses are ongoing. And, and in some instances, we don't know how long those are going. So that's in the civil realm. Also, the county, I can't, we can't, I don't think you can anticipate what civil suit might be filed today or tomorrow or next week. So there's some unpredictability with the civil realm. I think those cases generally take a lot more years. I know there was a case that just resolved last week or earlier this week. As far as criminal cases go, again, there's a level of unpredictability there. And so the, the only increase here is essentially $20,000 to that bucket and the rollover of funds from last year, which wouldn't be an increase. And that is because I'm aware of at least one complex case that's set for trial in September and another case or two that I know could potentially cost the county funds. And I don't want to be in a position where we don't ask for it. And, and then you're saying, and then there's a question of why didn't you prepare for that? So out of, out of abundance of caution, again, I think whatever we don't spend in these buckets goes back in, you know, at the end of the year, generally.
Anything further, Tom?
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure the whole thing out. We kind of, we kind of, we stepped out a little bit for you last year. And I'm just, I'm hoping that maybe we could get a little bit closer this year to where we need to be. So you might take a look at it and see if there's any room in any place that would help us out. I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. And I, and, Madam Chair, Commissioner Rolfe?
I've got another issue regarding, and this is strictly black and white. There is a, in your transfer to other funds, there's a transfer to the sheriff for shared position. And you're proposing $45,000 for that. It's, current year, it's 90,000. What position are we sharing with the sheriff?
Madam Chair, so our office, I think for the last four or five years, I believe, we have had a liaison from both the Helena Police Department and the Sheriff's Office. And so there's a detective position whose, their job is essentially be a liaison between our office and their agency. So they spend time in our office. And that, and the purpose of that is that if a case that we're prosecuting or reviewing for prosecution is, comes out of the Helena Police Department or if it comes out of the sheriff, that there are go-between to making sure that we're getting all the information for relevant for investigation. So that has been very helpful as far as making sure that our cases are adequately prepared and reviewed and charged and prosecuted. Right now, we have Detective John Cook from the Police Department, who's the representative, the Police Department, obviously. So he's at our office also.
He's city?
He's city, that's correct. And then there was just a transition, Detective Jess Patrick is the Sheriff's Office representative liaison. So I'm hoping, given enough, illuminating enough why we have those positions. That's been, I think, that's been going since 20, maybe 2020, maybe before that. I, I don't recall exactly, but we've essentially paid half of their salary to be in that position. That's an agreement we worked out with the Police Department and the, and the Sheriff's Office.
Okay, then another one. Up about three quarters of the way, there is $17,500 for a child advocacy center. Here again, shared with the sheriff. So that's the advocate you were talking about and the sheriff pays? That'll show up in his budget?
Madam Chair, so our office for, also for a number of years, has provided a contribution to what's called the CAC, the Child Advocacy Center. So the Child Advocacy Center is an entity within aware. I think, Madam Chair, they're right downtown. They just moved a new location. So they do forensic interview of child, children who have, you know, allegedly been abused physically or sexually. Okay, that's where those forensic interviews are conducted. And it's also where that's the start of a potential investigation to protect a child. So our office has given part of our budget to that entity because of their essential service they're providing for those types of cases. Now, I would, I know the county and other buckets is giving to Humane Society, the Friendship Center. So I think this is essentially the avenue that the county is-
So is this like a half FTE or a third? I mean, or does this not involve a full-time employee, a part-time?
Madam Chair, I don't know the details of how the CAC utilizes that contribution. I do know that it likely is towards operating expenses. So that could go towards, you know, partially paying an employee or providing therapeutic services or, you know, rent space in that downtown office. So the Sheriff's Office has mirrored that. I know this, the Police Department also gives a contribution to the CAC. And I know that the CAC is like a lot of entities is scraping by, getting by with what they have. So this has just been a, an annual contribution out of our budget to help with their services.
Okay. Frank, do you know, do we see a budget for the Child Advocacy Center? Does it show up?
Chair Payne, I, I don't, I'm not aware of one. We, we may receive one. I'm not, I'm not sure if we, we do.
I would, I was just curious. Okay, so our county, our county attorney's office is contributing 17,500. And then the city of Helena is contributing. I just think it would be interesting if we had a clearer understanding of how this is funded. And I'm not objecting to it, I just-
Chair Payne, I, we can, I'll put it down on my to-do list to request their Chair Payne most recent budget.
The 18-year veteran here is going to clear this up for me. Andy?
Give a little bit of history. Prior to the way we fund that now or the way we contribute to that now, apart from the Sheriff's Office and apart from the County Attorney's Office, it used to come through an outside entity. Like we, yesterday, we heard from Rocky Mountain Development Council. We heard from CASA and we contribute something to those programs directly from the commission. We used to do that for this. But it, the county attorney and the Sheriff's Office recommended to us that it is so essential for their, their cases where there is this, this forensic interviewing that we run that contribution through their, their budgets. And it's really purchasing a service. It's not paying for a position or anything like that. They're purchasing a service from aware to provide this forensics interviewing for these child abuse cases and those kinds of things. So it's not a position, it's not a county employee or anything like that. This aware is a private nonprofit in the community.
And that was my next question, so.
So they purchase this service and the two, the two budgets share that cost of what, what we annually anticipate they're going to need from partnering with that agency for that service that we don't have internally. We don't have these professional forensic interviewers that can do that in some of these really delicate cases with children. So that's, we purchased that service essentially. And, and it was determined about how, I can't remember how long ago either, in the teens somewhere, that this would be more appropriate out of the county attorney and the sheriff's budget. And, and they both advocated for that to happen. It was Leo Gallagher at the time that, when that transition was made. So it was prior to Mr. Downs. But anyway, just a little history there. We can sure ask them about what their budget is for their forensic interviewers or whatever you want. But it's a purchase of a service versus a staff or anything like that. And this is the-
Exactly the kind of thing people are concerned about. Spending money in a manner that we don't really understand. So that's the basis of my question. I just, and I'm looking at the sheriff's budget and trying to find out where their share of this cost would be. I think, Frank, if you could figure that out for me, that would be helpful. I'm not a very good number cruncher.
And I think one of the conclusions-
Excuse me, Andy?
I'm sure one of the conclusions at the time was that if we didn't have this service locally, as Mr. Downs mentioned earlier, that either some cases could not be prosecuted or pursued, or we would have to bring in an experts from somewhere else and ultimately cost us the county more than it would to have this local resource and make sure this local resource was, we partnered with them and made sure it was available.
Okay, and I'm, I'm absolutely not complaining about the service, the fact that we offered. I just would like to little, to have a little more information on how the, how the funding works. And I'm not sure that anybody here has a clear understanding. I, so do our contributions to, what did, what was the entity we pay?
Aware.
Aware. Are they in, do they show up in our budget someplace?
Well, through, through this, there's a-
This is what it is. It goes to-
Yeah, the county attorney's office and the sheriff's office have this line item that they can spend, that they, they give to aware for those services, those forensic.
Okay, and that is all it's used for, is that right?
Yeah, for that, to keep the Child Advocacy Center viable. That's our contribution.
Yeah, Madam Chair.
And aware is the Child Advocacy Center?
They're the, they house the child advocacy.
And Madam Chair, I just can't stress enough the value that a Child Advocacy Center has for this community. And I, I noted already, we are so fortunate to have a Child Advocacy Center in Helena. And not only a Child Advocacy Center, but a really good one. The directors, Paula Sams. And we cannot, we would have a very difficult time of the worst cases we see when a child sexually or physically abused. And if they don't have the services or interviewed in an appropriate manner, we can't prosecute those cases. So it's, it's often the cases that people don't want to think about or talk about because they're so horrific. And we cannot do that without the CAC. And I would, we always encourage, and I encourage all of my new staff that come in, that they go take a tour of the CAC so they know what they do. And I've worked in previous jobs with specialists and professionals who work with children. And so they're, they give, they're not re-victimized over and over and over. So the purpose of the CAC in large part is to make sure you have a safe, safe space for families and kids and that they're interviewed in a way that is upheld in court. We don't get legal challenges. And that the kid doesn't have to be re-interviewed by law enforcement and then a social worker and then by someone else. So those, they, they record those interviews. So those, they record those interviews, we use those in every case for child prosecution. So, I know the CAC, I'm on, like, we work with them daily, that they, they function on very little, and so, this amount is not a large amount, but it provides, as Commissioner Hunt-Housen said, just for them to keep their doors open. There's CACs in communities across state, but not every community has one. So if we did not have one here, we would have to take a child to Great Falls, Butte, Missoula, and then you're putting a kid maybe in a cop car, and driving him so they can go be interviewed, and that has proven to be very difficult on families and kids, and so, I just, I think people in our office who handle these cases would get up here and...
Back to the accounting. Why isn't there an amount in any of the earlier budgets for this?
It already is, it's been in every budget since, for years.
But not in the report in front of me, where it shows $17,500 for proposed 2026, there is nothing in FY '25 budget, or actuals, or, it's just blank. Why is that?
Chair Payne, that's a very typical practice of all of our budgets, where they won't, the prior year's itemized list of what is rolling into that total amount is usually not provided, because it ends up being kind of getting pretty messy with the budgets, because there's not a whole lot of room on the page. So what we see is, is we see what is the detail of making up that total contracted services, and this is usually reserved for the contract of the 3910 account, where you have rationale and items that you're trying to budget for year over year, and that can be fairly volatile, especially with Kevin's office. It's, you know, one year he may not have these cases, and the next year he does, it's, or it could be for a completely different reason why it's there. So, this request is something we would see year over year. So last year, he had already described what it was. Last year, it was 15, I think it was $15,000, because this is an increase from $15,000 to 17,500.
That's the information I wanted, $2,000, and it doesn't show up. And it just, I'm not a numbers person, and so when something is missing, it causes me to think, oh my God, what, we hiding something? You know how that Kevin is. No, it's just, I would be more comfortable if I had, and it doesn't have to go back for forever, it just has to show that it was there last year, and what the difference is. So, if it's a $2,000 difference...
And Chair Payne, just a reminder, on all of these requests, I mean, like we've heard the last two days, and then for the remainder of this day, we will be compiling a summary for you that provides the new requests. So, when I bring that to you, it'll show you $15,000 versus the 17,500. So, you will, you will get more detail, and we will get more into the weeds on these, and all of these new requests, Kevin's, Public Works, the sheriff's office, everyone's that has had a new request will be brought to you, and we will go through those line by line, and you will vote, I don't know if you, I don't think you vote on them individually, but...
At least we'll be informed.
You're going to see, yep, every one of them, and we'll go through them.
That's what I'm asking for. So, okay, so be patient, quit, okay, getting the cart before the horse. Okay, that's, thank you for those comforting words. Andy, do you have any further questions or comments?
Just another thanks for all the explanation, appreciate it. It's good understanding, Mr. Cornwell, I think that the fixed costs are carried by every one of our departments, and offices are going to be strapped by those. I mean, that's one of those things, we come down with the 2.13 COLA, the increase in health insurance, and then the IT costs, that's, those are fixed. So beyond that, as Mr. Downs said, this increase is only the $16,000, or 16, whatever it is, correct? Out of a three, over $3 million budget. So it's pretty, pretty small in that regard.
And Madam Chair, and I'm realizing, my math was incorrect earlier when I said this, so, Madam, just, so, we've requested $20,000 increase on all these buckets that we have control over, and we decreased two buckets, so actually, the total that we're requesting is $14,000 increase of all the buckets that we can control. So, that's the increase, we're asking for a $14,000 increase.
Yeah, $14,000 increase. Increase or decrease?
Increase.
Okay. Tom, does that help you with your explanation or your questions?
I think that there's, I'm missing something, I'm getting a, I'm getting a larger dollar amount than that, but I guess we'll just have to take a look at it, and we can work with Frank to understand it more fully.
Last year, I wasn't the chair, and I didn't ask questions the way I have, and this year, I'm asking, I need to understand this, when those people out there meet me in the grocery store and say, why in the hell are my property taxes so high, you county people are spending all my money, and I want to, we get this stuff, and if I don't have a pretty firm understanding, and of course, I don't explain it to them, but I would just be more comfortable once I have a better understanding of this, and I really appreciate all the information that you provide, and then there's Frank over there, who actually understands numbers probably more clearly than any of the lawyers in the House. So, thank you for all that. Any further questions for the county attorney? Tom?
No, I don't think...
Are there, is there any public comment?
Commissioner Payne?
No public comment. Mr. Balls?
I just wanted to just say very briefly, too, we sure do appreciate the county attorney's office, at the county staff level, too, Mr. Hash and Mr. Shea, Commissioner Hunt-Housen already alluded to, they meet with our different department directors, all throughout the organization, on a continual basis, they help us with their review, they've put a legal review request process in place a few years ago, which has worked really well. So I just, I wanted to say thank you for that, and also, Commissioner Hunt-Housen already touched on this, but the O and M levy that we went out to our voters for, we're almost halfway through that 15-year period for the operations and maintenance levy for, you know, we remodeled our detention center, and jail diversion was a component of what our voters actually approved for us to work on, and criminal justice services, working together, the county attorney's office is an important piece of that, the judiciary, I see our Justice of the Peace, Swingley here today, is a big piece of that, the CAC, the CJCC, Criminal Justice Services, the sheriff's office, the list goes on and on. So, those are just all things thinking strategically ahead, and I just wanted to say thank you, and especially appreciate the civil attorneys, Mr. Hash and Mr. Shea, and the work they do for us. And commissioners, I can't resist this, so, moving away from the county attorney's office budget, I just wanted to reiterate what Mr. Cornwell said, and I know we talked about this the first day of these budget presentations. After we're finished today, we will be having another meeting, which is scheduled to occur on June the 12th. That June the 12th meeting will have this compilation that Mr. Cornwell already referred to. We are tracking all of the requests for new funding, and we will go through that list with the commissioners. We do this every year as a part of our budget process, and if, and it also kind of highlights the importance of something that we do in January. If you'll remember, we sent out a budget message, Mr. Cornwell sent that out, and that budget message, again as a reminder, said that the priorities for our budget this year is that we want to maintain our existing levels of service, that our services and programs that our citizens need and expect. We also want to make sure that we accommodate, if we can, a cost of living adjustment for our workforce, and we focused on 2.13%. That message also said that we want to make sure we take care of what was already mentioned by Mr. Downs and others today, fixed costs. Fixed costs are things that we must take care of, like the cost for ITS services, but they also include health insurance, they also include property and casualty insurance. So there are fixed costs that typically go up every year, that we must accommodate in our budget. That budget message also focused on that we have to accommodate and plan for funding for what we term unfunded mandates, mandates that we have from various sources that we need to provide. Those come in every year as well, too. So, in our budget message that we sent out in January, we focused on all of those commissioners, and just as a reminder, after that, there are certainly discretionary requests, then, that you will have, that you can consider, once we've addressed all of those issues in our list of how we handle our budget every year. And I want to stress again, this is nothing new, this is a process that we go through every year, but again, on June the 12th, we will be having a meeting where we will review a number of high-level, important budget decisions that you'll need to make as our county commissioners, including requests for new funding and increases. And that's where you'll see the decisions that will go forward, for instance, for any requests for new staffing, or increases in funding for other things that we've talked about as well, too. And I'm sorry, Mr. Downs, it has nothing to do with the county attorney's office, but we've had requests to increase funding for things...
It has to do with the county attorney's office, with the Justice of the Peace, I mean, this impacts everyone, and I appreciate your reminding us that...
It's just a reminder...
As I said earlier, when you're up to your elbows in alligators, it's sometimes hard to remember, you were sent there to drain the swamp, so, keep us focused.
Thanks, commissioners.
Okay, Andy?
Just one more thing, I hate to reopen Cana Worms, but one more point to make about this, and from how I remember this happening, actually. So, this request for increasing the contracted services, or dealing with the unknown for some of these cases that you might have, and you know that you're going to have a homicide trial coming up in this next year, it sounds like, right? Being proactive in terms of having that budget authority, it might not be spent, like this year, you had money in that fund, and you had $65,000 left over, correct? And that's rolling over, so you didn't spend that much. So, if there were $100,000 authorized, that may not all be spent, may spend 20,000 of it, may spend all 100,000 of it. But I remember back, Leo Gallagher had a large case, and they needed to bring in someone from outside, and that fund was not healthy enough to handle the costs they needed for a large, very complex trial, and I remember him coming to the commission, we had to go through a budget amendment process, we had to go through a public deal to put more money into the county attorney's office, so that he could get an expert gun guy from Colorado or someone to come in for this case, and we didn't proactively authorize that funding for him, and I think since then, we've been trying to do that more proactively, and that fund often doesn't get fully spent, in some years, it does, but I just want to put out that caution, if we're anticipating that these costs might be there, and we don't do it, we're going to have to be responsible for that anyway, because if it gets in the middle of a case and says, we have to have this guy here, or this thing happen, or this investigation of this, and it's going to cost this amount of money, the county's going to be responsible for those dollars anyway, unless we don't, and we decide not to prosecute the case in a way that we need to. So, I just, just a note of caution, that that's kind of where this has been in the past, and I'd rather be proactive than reactive in a case like this. So, just thoughts, as you were talking, it made me think of that, what happened back 10, 15 years ago.
Roger.
If I could, Chair, just to build on what Commissioner Hunt-Housen just said, just absolutely captured the concepts, and just as a reminder, under state law, and through the delegated authority of the county commissioners, we have a number of policies in the way we operate financially, that give us flexibility to, sometimes, we can amend our budget during the year, following the approved legal processes, but where we know that we're anticipating those expenses to occur, it only makes sense in our budget process, as a financial practice, for us to budget for that. And then, we always have some uncertainties, and we always have changes that happen throughout our fiscal year, that necessitate budget amendments to occur, just to build on what Commissioner Hunt-Housen said, sometimes it's staffing-related, sometimes we get grant money in that we weren't anticipating, or we have unforeseen expenses. As you were speaking, Commissioner Hunt-Housen, I was reminded of all the horses that were confiscated some time ago, and we had to make budget adjustments based on all of that. So, that's not unusual in the context of how we operate financially, but having requests that try to plan ahead for these anticipated expenses is absolutely what these budget hearings are all about. And Commissioner Rolf, to go back to a point you were making, yeah, just to summarize, you said this earlier, the budget that's being requested for the county attorney's office is $4 million, it's up from where it was last year, but you've been given all the explanation of why it's up. Contracted services and some of the fixed costs are the primary reason for that. So, not unusual in the context of these budget meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Tom, anymore from you?
Nope, I think we've hashed it over pretty good, and we just have to put it all in the salad, and see how much we can eat.
Kind of like sausage making, yes, I've heard about this. Thank you for coming over.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, commissioners, appreciate your time.
Okay, hit the road. We got another case right here in front of us. It is 11:02, oh, and we have Justice of the Peace budget is next in line. Would you come up and give us your report?
Mr. Downs is tall.
Okay, is the green light on?
It is, thank you.
All right.
All right, so first to introduce the, come on up, two individuals with me, this is, excuse me, Paul Widdom, he is the main clerk, or court supervisor for my court, he also helps to oversee some of personnel issues in Judge Piskulich Court, and then Tom Bremer, who is the lead clerk supervisor in the court of Judge Piskulich. To give a very quick rundown of the justice courts, there are two courts in this county, Judge Piskulich oversees one court, and I, Judge Swingley, oversee the other. We are courts of record, which means we are an in-between court, we are a little bit above a normal Justice of the Peace, and obviously below a district court. The difference between our court and a normal Justice of the Peace is, if you appeal a case in our court, you do not get a new trial in district court. The district court simply review the record, and, sorry, I didn't, thank you, members of the commission, filling this be here, I let my manner slip, I apologize.
That's perfectly fine, a lot of us have, were kind of inexperienced at these.
I'm sorry about that.
You go right.
In our court, the district courts simply review the record, they determine whether the Justice of the Peace made any errors, and then they either affirm, or overturn, or deny the appeals. Because of that, we also have greater authority, we have some concurrent jurisdiction with the district courts, actually in Lewis and Clark County, and we can handle some cases that other Justice of the Peace cannot handle. This is a money-saving issue for the county attorney's office especially, instead of having to go upstairs and have a whole new trial in district court on the same case, their deputy county attorneys can simply address the appeal in writing, and sometimes have to go up and make brief arguments to the district courts, but this is a huge savings for them, as far as personnel, recalling witnesses, witness fees, because they don't have to do an actual second trial, it's one of the bigger benefits. Our courts are incredibly busy, our cases increase every year, five to 1,000 filings, 500 to 1,000 filings. Last year alone, we had 5,615 new filings, and we were still handling cases from the year before that take up lots of our docket. 3,939 misdemeanors we handled, we handled 1,800 civil matters, and that includes small claims cases. Justice courts are, have a subcourt of small claims. I'm actually a small claims judge and a Justice of the Peace, it's a subcourt and justice court, and people can bring cases there if the amount were... And people can bring cases there if the amount or the items they're seeking are less than $7,000. Our civil disputes can be up to $15,000. That's the limit that we have in justice courts. There is some dispute right now as to whether, because we have concurrent jurisdiction with the district courts and landlord-tenant cases, whether that $15,000 amount applies or not. And that's before the Supreme Court. Some of the agencies that file cases in our court are the Montana Highway Patrol, Lewis and Clark County Sheriff's Department, Department of Livestock, Fish, Wildlife and Parks, Motor Carrier Services. We have formal complaint filings by the county attorney's office. We do assume cases from the municipal court when their judge has recused herself. That happens frequently. And we also have cases filed by the Attorney General's Office in our court. Because we're in the capital city, the Attorney General's Office has the option of filing cases in our courts versus courts in other counties, even if the crimes occurred there. If the transactions ended in this county, for instance, if there's a fishing game violation in another county by computer, if they've applied for permits they shouldn't, because that transaction ends at the computers in Lewis and Clark County at the fishing game headquarters, they can file the cases here. So we get a lopsided amount of fishing game violations filed here and other cases involving the state. We specifically, on our misdemeanor side, we handle such things as assault, theft, disorderly conduct, criminal trespass, partner-family member assaults. We handle the first and second offense PFMA's. A third or subsequent is a felony, and they would go upstairs to district court. We do handle DUIs for first, second, and third offense. Fourth offense or more is a felony, and those would go to district court. On the district court side, our state constitution says that the justice courts are the examining courts for felonies. And so when felonies are charged in this county, the high, excuse me, the justice courts do all the initial hearings. We do the initial appearance, set bond, read their rights, tell them what their offenses are and their penalties. And then we're required to set what's called a preliminary hearing, which is about 10 days out. And that is an intermediary hearing where the defense can challenge the probable cause for the felony. We almost never have those. We set those, and most of the time, the defense agrees to just go to district court and do the initial arraignment before the district judge and continue the case. Occasionally, though, we do have those. And during those hearings, the justice court can decide whether there is probable cause enough to actually send the case to district court. We have some, we have quite a bit of authority at the beginning of the felonies to help with those cases. We did 940 of those last year alone. It's quite a bit. We do orders of protection, which are civil orders, of course. They also are called restraining orders commonly. Those are frequently in our courts. And the unusual thing about orders of protection are that we often cross over with district court in those cases. They sometimes have felony domestics, violations of no-contact orders, divorce cases, child custody. And they often have provisions in place also in those cases that are similar to no-contact orders, orders of protection. It's really imperative that our courts cross over, agree to make our orders parallel. And so those become a much more involved type of hearing and order for us. They also carry with them extreme amounts of emotion, and they can be very dangerous. Along those lines, as we all know, unfortunately, we had a security issue at our courthouse on March 14th. I can tell you that that really scared a lot of the clerks. In fact, one of our clerks is leaving the court because of it. Along those lines, our clerks often come in contact with defendants or people that have been in our courts out in public. And this particular clerk actually was approached by a defendant who made comments to her that made her very uncomfortable. This is a frequent thing. The people that come into our courts are not on a winning streak usually. They're accused of crimes. They're in the middle of being evicted from their homes. They're in the middle of orders of protection. They are being sued. There isn't anybody that comes in there that's happy. And oftentimes, the emotion and those angers are directed towards us, specifically the judges. I get approached in public frequently by people that are very unhappy, and the clerks do also. We deal with thousands of people, and they recognize our clerks, and they often approach them. The reason I'm telling you this is we need to keep trying to get our clerks a little more money. They can't compete with state jobs. You can leave the courts and go get a similar state job and make more money. The city clerks make significantly more money, excuse me, than our clerks do. And I firmly believe that the justice court clerks work in a niche job in the county. They have to deal with the things that I just talked about. Additionally, our caseload is so large that it is a constant battle to keep up with the paperwork. Every one of these cases that are filed require our clerks to go through a myriad of steps. Some are required by law. For instance, a landlord-tenant case has very specific timelines that we have to get it on the calendar. I have to hear it. I have to make a decision within five days. Orders of protection have to be scheduled within 20 days. I have to make a decision that day. There are civil, small claims, criminal cases that have speedy trial issues, and they have guidelines set by law. The problem we're having now is we can barely keep up with the paperwork, just the shuffling of documents alone. Secondly, we have so many cases, we can barely get them on the calendar. There are, by law, judicial days and non-judicial days, and we are only allowed to hold court on any day other than a Saturday, Sunday, state holiday, or a federal holiday, which means that generally Monday through Friday, from eight to four, is the only time we can schedule hearings and trials. This becomes an issue. We have cases, I have eight cases on my desk right now that are claiming violations of speedy trial because we simply couldn't get them on the calendar. And those may be dismissed because of that. This is a real issue. We have two courts. We all work very hard to take care of what happens in Lewis and Clark County, but there are 70,000-plus people in this county. We have a major interstate. Highway 12 goes through here. We have lots of recreation. And because of that, that brings a significant amount of cases to our courts. Specifically, light traffic right now is picking up, and we're going to have more DUIs, more fishing game violations. We're going to have domestics at the campgrounds. Those are just, that's just an example of something that we face seasonally. So it's a very busy place. I do want to mention, I agree with Commissioner Payne, that the citizens who pay taxes here need answers. And I can tell you that our courts strive to minimize the impact on the taxes. I think we're probably the most efficient offices in the county. We literally require computers, office space, office supplies, and personnel. And I'm paid to make decisions. That's what you pay me for. And so we're very efficient. We try to use as little of the taxpayers' dollars as possible, and I think we watch that very closely. Additionally, I would like to see us put out of business, but because we're not, we send the county every month a significant check for the county's portion of fines. We don't make you a profit off of this, and I hope that we're put out of business soon. But we do generate because of that some income for the county, which comes back and is not reflected on our budget. So with that, I'm going to see if these gentlemen would like to add anything, and then I'll be open for questions. Mr. Widdom would like to address the jury costs for this year.
Thank you very much for your time, Commissioners. So I just wanted to bring up, for jury trials in this last fiscal year, we had 23, and I'm not sure exactly the reason why, but we've seen a big uptick in jury trials since, I would say, after the pandemic. We're averaging probably 15 to 25 each fiscal year. And so I think it looks like our budget last year was 7,500 for the jury fees. And so I believe that we're asking for, bringing that up to $10,000, just because of how much work entails into the juries. We anticipate each jury to be between about $600 to $700 that we have to pay for the jurors, for notices, for mileage. And we're just seeing, so like this past fiscal year, about two juries a year. And I want to say, when I first started in 2008 and probably before the beginning of the pandemic, we were, it was pretty surprising to see maybe five jury trials in each fiscal year. And so we don't know exactly why. That's been a big uprise, but that's why we're asking for those to be raised.
Yeah. Commissioner, thank you for having us here today. I'm going to piggyback a little bit off of what Judge Swingley said.
Would you state your name?
Yes, of course. Tom Bremer with Justice Court. So as Judge Piskulich was saying, we've had multiple people leave. We've had three in the last year, mainly leaving for jobs for more money. It's not like private sectors, DPHHS, and the county attorney's office. Paul and I take a lot of time training those individuals, the new ones that come in. I'm training two right now. I have another one to do next month for a new hire. We don't enjoy being that stepping stone to go someplace else. You know, we want to be on the top of that. Not the top, but we like to be towards the top, and it's hard for people to want to come to us when, you know, the pay rates are a little bit lower than other places. Obviously, we don't have a desire to become millionaires. We love serving the community. You know, Paul and I have both been here for 15 years alone with the justice court. Swingley's been 14, 15 years now? 15 years now. You know, we love being here. We love serving the community. I think it's super hard for us to watch people leave discouraged, so not many people do leave our office with a bad attitude and discouragement because of, you know, how we train people and the amount of effort that they put into work in giving out to the community is, you know, the people that come in, you know, we don't want to see them leaving, you know, upset. So obviously, that happens where we work. But I think the big thing is we are asking for, you know, a bigger pay scale for, you know, what we offer right now to our employees. Thank you.
I knew we threw a lot at you there. I want to touch on the jury trials. One of the reasons we have more jury trials right now, there's several reasons, but one of them is that we just have more crimes filed all the time in our court. We're 800 to 1,000 more cases a year, and that's obviously going to bring more jury trials. Jury trials are expensive. The, if the defendant loses, the court has the option of charging them the jury fees. And as Mr. Widdom said, a jury will cost $600 to $700. If we have the amount of juries we had last year, we're going to be roughly $16,000 in charges. There's an issue with charging the defendant, though. One is, we have to make an economic determination that they can actually pay their fines or pay the fees, and generally, that takes a long time to get it back, and many times we have to waive it. If the state loses, then the court absorbs that cost. And as Mr. Widdom said, we have to pay them for their time, their mileage. If we bring a juror from Augusta down to Helena to serve, there's quite a bit of mileage there. It is a big cost, and it's going to go up. There's no way that's going to go down. I've looked at all these numbers on our budget. I think they're reasonable. They seem to fit the same thing year after year. I would obviously like to see a little bit more pay for our clerks so we can recruit and retain people. When we lost the last few clerks, we had a very difficult time even attracting applicants, and people didn't even show up to interviews. And we went through a couple of interview processes where we couldn't even pick somebody. We're going to have to do that now. We actually had to bring in temporary employees because we can't get anybody hired. And, you know, some of the reasons are, they just, it's a very difficult job. It's very difficult to deal with the public all the time. Like I said, most are very upset, and they focus that on us. They're very upset with me all the time and Judge Piskulich. Everything else looks good. I guess we've thrown a lot at you right now, and I would be open for questions.
Thank you. Let us look at this a little bit, and then we'll... Andy, do you have immediate comments and words of wisdom?
Thank you. Chair Payne, Judge, thanks for being here. Guys, thank you very much. Appreciate all the work that you do and had opportunity over the years. We've been here a long time together, so kind of been able to see your work and really much appreciation for what you do. And you're right, the workload has really increased over the years, and Judge used to be, you guys used to be on your own.
Yeah, I was for a long time.
It's great to have Judge Piskulich there as well, and, but, you know, things continue to increase, and I really appreciate that. So one of the questions I'm going to have, just an explanation for salaries, I think we, and you may be aware of this, but one of the things that we do is a salary survey. And so we compare ourselves to like-county organizations across the state and try to get, you know, in, within a middle, upper-middle range there for folks. And so I'll be curious to look at that, to see where we are, and, you know, if we're including cities in that comparison, those kinds of things. So definitely, we'll follow up on that. I think what you're, the budget that you're presenting to us right here is what we're considering right now, but those things, we really have to take in mind. And I appreciate your bringing forward, if jury trials are going to be, you know, costs have gone up, and we've been trying to keep up with some of those cost-of-living type things, but, you know, just those fixed costs of getting a jury panel seated and all of that, and how much that runs, you know, we need to make sure that we're keeping on top of those kinds of things. But I just want to, again, express my appreciation for the work that you do, as well as, and I mentioned this to the county attorney, is that, and you heard Mr. Balt's comments about the voter-approved levy for the detention center improvements, and then all of those, that programming that went around that. And we can't even pursue those goals without all of us working together and without all of the pieces of the criminal justice puzzle being at the table. So I just want to thank you for your input, your participation, your role in that, and being willing to, you know, with the good and the bad and the learning pains that we've had with criminal justice services and all of that, just being at the table and working with us to try and improve the system and looking at all the ways that we can be more efficient and get people through our system or out of our system or disengaged from our system more readily. And I just appreciate the work that you do. So we'll look at this and take your comments very seriously, and we'll follow up.
Thank you. I would encourage you, when you do your salary surveys, that you compare court clerks to court clerks in the bigger jurisdictions. It's a very unique position, and if we're going to compare them simply to administrative assistants or secretarial positions that have none of the challenges we do, I think it's somewhat unfair to do that, and we should probably compare them to other court clerks, specifically such as municipal court, Billings, Yellowstone County, Missoula County, some of those places that have the same workloads and the same challenges we do. I would thank you for attacking the security issue at the courthouse. I've been, of course, talking about that for years, and not if, but when sort of situation. I really appreciate you taking care of that. Our clerks are under danger all the time, and they clearly are. So thank you. And any more questions?
Tom?
Just to kind of get a handle on things, what's your personnel load here? What's your full FTE?
We have, I have three clerks. Judge Piskulich is supposed to have two clerks and Mr. Bremer, who's the court supervisor of them. And then Mr. Widdom is my clerk supervisor. He does additional supervision over the other court. And so basically, three in Judge Piskulich and four total in my court.
Three plus the judges? Four plus the judges or?
Yeah.
Three, including the judges?
We have seven full clerks and two judges, so nine total.
All right.
I only have one civil clerk who is trying to...
Nine FTEs then, right?
Um...
Okay.
Yes.
And they're part-time people?
Oh, no.
Okay.
And like I started to say, I have one civil clerk that has to deal with 1,800, or, you know, roughly, 1,800 civil cases, two in our two courts. And we have one clerk in these court that tries to do that. Because of all the criminal filings, it's impossible to have just one. There's just so many. That's a full-time position by itself. We could put two clerks in each court just to do civil, and they would be able to hopefully keep up for us. And one thing I neglected to say, I know we're taking time, I'll get out of here, but... out of here, but we do have cases filed by the Civil Department of the County Attorney's Office, specifically community decay cases. I saw an article about community decay. Their office files in our courts. We handle those cases. And so their civil office, besides the criminal part of the, the County Attorney's Office, also has dealings in our court. Other questions?
I don't have a question, but I'd like to make a comment for you. Many of us who are in this realm have no idea of what it's like to be a prisoner, or in jail, or in spent, you know, dealing with criminal charges. As a county commissioner, I've run into the fact that some of the people that you are dealing with are the children of my friends and the people who are in my social strata, which is not that, you know, it's not that fancy. This is Helena, Montana. But still, and I, the work that is done by you and the people that work for you in dealing with these citizens who are generally unempowered, oftentimes not well-educated, they, they really have no idea what they're getting into. This is just really important. Yes, we need to protect the, the property of the well-to-do, but we also have to protect the rights of the unempowered. And that's the, the position you, you folks hold. Regarding the, the clerks, we've got a situation down in our motor vehicle department where, and I sometimes laugh about it, we, we should offer them combat pay. And that may be something you want to, and I'm being facetious, but there are many positions in the county government that people, our citizens, take advantage of, yell at them, throw things, decide they don't have to mind their manners. And so we do what we can to remind them, yes, you will pay attention. So thank you for all that hard work. I have no, I don't have any questions. It was a good presentation. Nobody else. Okay.
I've got...
Tom's got more questions. Go for it, Tom.
I have another question, if I might, Madam Chair. There is, you're picking up a lot of part-time, temporary help, apparently.
Well, when we can't fill the position for a clerk, which has been impossible sometimes, we've had to actually go out and try to recruit a temporary employee to fill that spot. We've had times where we've interviewed or, or had applications out and not been able to get anybody to come to work for us.
Okay. So your regular salaries, so that really that, those temp, those temp positions are just when you, when you're missing an individual?
They're desperate.
That's clarified. Thank you.
And we've had to do that at least five times since I've been here. And a couple of times in the last couple of years because we can't recruit people to work for the justice courts.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Andy, anything else? Okay. Is there any public comment on this matter?
Please come see us. Please come to my court and watch prisoners, you know, understand why the jail's full, can see what's going on there in the courts. I've extended this offer, offer to the commissioners since in 15 years, I've only had two commissioners show up to court, see what we do. Please come see us.
I think...
I would really appreciate that.
I've been in the justice court as a, an attorney. It's been a long time ago. But anyway, thank you for what you do.
Thank you so much.
And this part of our budget hearing is closed, and we'll move on into the next one. Thank you for coming over. Ah, county extension.
Hello, greetings. Chair Payne, commissioners. For the record, my name is Shay Bersama, and I'm the department head for the extension department here in Lewis and Clark County.
Do you know she's from Red Point?
Go Pirates. And just, yeah, thank you so much for listening to us this morning and for your time and your attention. Our budget request this year is just focused on maintaining the status quo. So we've kept our operations and maintenance funding consistent with previous years. We're not asking for increases in our general operational lines. We're just simply continuing the effective and efficient service model that our office has been operating under for many years. So along with that, we have one full-time permanent employee, and her COLA, an increase in the county health contribution is aligned with the countywide adjustments that have been made. So that's that increase in that line item. The increased CIP allocation is just part of our effort to restore our capital reserves to a fully funded level, just in case there are things that we need to purchase in the future. We're prepared to do that without asking for an increase in our other line items. Our county contribution for contracted services stays the same this year at $39,000 per agent. And I'm very excited to report that we are finally fully staffed. After kind of that period of transition, we're thrilled to be at full capacity and serve all corners of Lewis and Clark County more effectively with everybody we have on board. So I have them with me here this morning. If you guys have a moment, I'd love for them to be able to introduce themselves so that you can get to know them a little bit better.
I think that would be appropriate.
Okay, I'll let them go then.
Good morning. Nice to see you again.
Come speak into the mic and say your name.
Alicia Schmidt, for the record, 4-H Extension Agents. Nice to see you again. Thank you, commissioners, for having me today. Thanks for having us today. I hope to see you all at the fair. You're more than welcome. It's been a pleasure. It's been two months since I've been in the position, and it's been great. Do you have any questions for me?
Um, not really, no.
Yeah.
Andy?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair Payne and commissioners. My name is Sophia Franslivers. I'm the new agriculture and horticulture agent in Lewis and Clark County. I started about two weeks ago, so I'm very new in, but very excited for the job and excited to serve the community. Got a lot of things planned, getting back into the mustard gardener program here, looking at the pesticide, private applicators license program, lots of things with the noxious weed program going on this summer. So a lot of different ways to serve our community in, with agriculture and horticulture, and getting a lot of calls already from people doing backyard gardening, wondering what's going wrong with their, their plants, their trees. So that's been great to be able to serve the community in that way. So thank you.
I have a question that I'm thinking maybe Sophia is part of the answer. I am, I've got friends who work to put the fair together. They're 4-H leaders. And during, I think it was last summer's fair, I was visiting with one of them, and they were really upset because there was a very lack of support for the work they're trying to do. And they wanted to make sure that somebody was there helping. I mean, they love doing the work, but they think they should have somebody, you know, tell them how to get this stuff done. So it's not Sophia.
Alicia is...
Alicia.
Yes.
Okay. And you are going to, when I talk to my friends that work a lot with 4-H, I will say, you talked to Alicia.
Absolutely, yes.
I, I am not the person. Alicia?
I am the person. So I have 500 members, ages eight to 18, and 100 volunteers. And I support all of them and their families. Yeah.
Well, I think a lot of these people have worked the 4-H for many years, and so they pretty much know what they're doing.
Oh, they're fantastic.
But they really need to be, you know, sort of make sure they're all marching in the same direction.
And thanked, and thanked, graciously thanked. The work you give them and the funding you give them. It's fantastic. Recently, we pulled in three different estimates to have the scale and the livestock scale updated. And that's you. That's all your support, and I tell them that straight out. So thank you.
And then Sophia, question for you. We have the county weed department and Christian, what's Christian's last name? What? Late. Say again.
Leitner, right?
Christian runs our weed department. And to my mind, I look around and see a lot of weeds. And so do you coordinate your efforts with, with our weed department?
Yes, yes, we coordinate. I've been speaking with him already, and we coordinate how to handle people who have weed problems, how to get support for them. So working closely with them, yes.
Okay. I'm pleased to hear that.
Yes, they do a lot of good work, too. So we kind of break it up a little bit and support in both directions.
Okay. And recognize that there, the weeds are not only in the Helena Valley, they are in Augusta and Lincoln.
They are everywhere, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's why we also have the noxious weed program. And actually, next week is Noxious Weed Awareness Week. So doing some awareness for it so people can learn to recognize those weeds and get them out of their properties. So.
Okay, that's fabulous. Okay.
As you can tell, they've really hit the ground running. So we're very lucky to have them here in Lewis and Clark County. And we're very lucky to have you supporting us in our programs. And we just appreciate, again, your continued support. Do you guys have any other questions for us?
And you're doing this with the same budget you had last year?
Correct, yes. So last year, we had people leaving, and, and it was kind of, kind in the middle of the fiscal year. So we had planned to have those positions filled all year. So we're keeping the same model moving forward because we had planned for that last year, but now we actually have people to fill those positions this year. So I think we will be providing more services for sure, but keeping the budget the same as last year. Yes.
Okay. Andy, you've got something to say? Question?
I was just going to thank you. I appreciate it. Welcome, both of you, and looking forward to it. I was going to ask a question about how fair's shaping up. We're looking good. Everything's coming together and feeling good about it? Yeah.
They love the livestock.
Oh.
125 pigs and the 43 rabbits and...
They do not want a homeless camp on the edge of the fairgrounds. Well...
We're working on it. Yes, that's been a...
It's, well, that's not the primary goal of fairgrounds. Tom, did you have some comments?
Just wanted to know a little bit about how that, how that fat stock sale's shaping up and how many, how many total animal, yeah, how much?
So 4-H is outdoor as well?
Thank you. 4-H is outdoor as well as indoor. So there's two facets to 4-H. And what you're talking about is the outdoor section. And we're almost at capacity for all of our animals, for steer, for dairy, for pigs, swine, swine, forgive me. I always say the wrong thing. For chickens, rabbits, all the different activities, goats, sheep. It's shaping up. So.
And the dates for, for the summer, the summer 4-H sale?
For the livestock?
Livestock.
That's Saturday. So that's going out. We actually were able to get a permit number for nonprofit status with the postal, postal service. So any sort of mailings that we send out to advertise that is now at a better rate than what we had before. We were being charged just a regular rate. So I was able to secure that last month, I think. So we sent out our first mailing for livestock on Saturday, the 26th, inviting more people to come rather than just the buyers that had come before, to open it up more to the community.
Saturday, Saturday, the, Saturday, the 26th of?
July.
July.
Yeah, the 21st to the 26th.
All right. Wonderful.
Yes, it is, it is wonderful. It's one of my favorite things. So.
We have, our, our family have been great supporters. We enjoy it. And my, my late brother went to 4-H Congress, National 4-H Congress, and, and my wife's aunt was on the state extension staff. So we were pretty heavily invested.
Me too.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. It is the stewardship. It's wonderful. It was here before me, it'll be here after me. So I appreciate it.
Great.
Thank you.
Now, I have a couple of questions for you, Shay.
Yes.
I'm looking at the general summary for your budget, and it includes one full-time permanent employee, and I assume that is you.
So Chair Payne, our, our full-time permanent employee is our administrative assistant. So Emily is our only employee that is through the county. Your agents in Lewis and Clark County are paid through contracted services, and that is the $39,000 that you fund for each agent.
Okay. And how many agents do we have?
We have three agents. So the three of us up here are our three agents in Lewis and Clark County.
Okay, so the $39,000, then that, that's times three?
Correct. Yep, that's our, yep.
Okay. And so that's our part of the contract. Are you guys only paid $39,000 a year?
No. So the way it works is that that's about roughly 43% of our agent salaries. So like I said, Lewis and Clark County provides $39,000 of that. It doesn't come directly to our salaries. It goes into a general fund and then is distributed. Each agent is paid a different salary based on education and time in the system. But depending on how many agents you have in your county, that is what you supply for us.
And this is paid through MSU?
Correct. Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Andy? Tom? Frank?
No, no questions, but welcome aboard, you two. It's good to see your face and, you know, be able to recognize you now. I've had some phone calls with, with Alicia, and then it was good to meet you, Sophie. So welcome aboard and looking forward to working with all you.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah. Well, and we'll see you. Are you still going up to Augusta doing the weightlifting?
I sure am. Yes, absolutely. I love it up there.
Yeah, it's, it's a wonderful place. Well, what about Lincoln? Are they, is Lincoln being neglected?
So I actually was going to send you guys an email, well, with Roger included in that, on us attending Government Day this coming month, because you guys have a Lincoln Government Day coming up June 5th. Correct me if I'm wrong.
That is correct.
Yes. So at least once or twice a year, I try to go up there and say, hey, we have these services. Please utilize them. We would love to come up here and, and get into your community. It's been kind of hard to break into Lincoln, I will admit. So we will be up there on June 5th, if you'll allow us to attend the meeting. And hopefully, this, this time is the charm that we get into Lincoln. So it's not without effort. It's just that Augusta has been a lot more receptive to these services, but we're eager to get into Lincoln for sure.
Okay, that's...
Not for them, if I might.
Tom?
They also have a community council in Lincoln, and, and they usually meet earlier in the month, or towards, towards mid part, mid to late part of the, of the month. It's called the Upper Blackfoot Community Council.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner.
And when we, when you come up for the Lincoln meeting, we'll make sure you get introduced and connect with those folks as well.
That'd be lovely. Thank you.
Chair Payne.
Thank you, Tom. Andy?
Just so that we're not showing up on different days, it's the 6th.
The 6th, okay.
Friday, the 6th.
I'm sure it's in my calendar, but things get a little jumbled up here. But thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, that would be, that's a good way to sort of get your little nose under the tent, and people then see you and come to know who you are.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Wonderful.
Any further questions? Okay, seeing none. Is there any public comment? In that case, we will adjourn this meeting for our lunch break, and then at 1:00, move into the public health portion of our program. So thank you, ladies, for coming in.
Thank you.
Call this portion of our budget meeting to order. We've taken a brief lunch break, and now we're going to hear the ongoing saga of the public health budget. Welcome, Drinda.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, and members of the commission. My name is Drinda Nieman, and I'm the department director for Lewis and Clark Public Health. And today I have before you our fiscal year '26 budget. So as you have heard in prior years, our budget is complex, and so we break it into three pieces to help... and so we break it into three pieces to help understand it and to also work through the details of it. But we'll start with the overall summary of our budget, which is what you see on page 3 of your packet and what is on the screen currently. So for revenues that we expect to see coming in for fiscal year '26, we're looking at $6,415,074 in anticipated revenue for our entire budget. For expenses, we're looking at planning for $7,196,903. That gives us more expenses than revenue of $781,000. I want to bring your attention to the column, the second to last column on the spreadsheet and the very last number where it says 1.9 million. That is our current cash balance as of right now. So the $781,000 that we anticipate being as far as expenses over revenue, we will use that cash balance that is sitting there in order to cover that. And we are going to get into those details so you can understand the intricacies of that. Our budget does account for the 2.13% cost of living that's proposed and we are expecting to have just over 40 FTE, about just short of 40 staff in the Health Department. I want to take just a brief moment and before we move into the details of the budget, point out one really important aspect of our revenue. So we have, again, complex budget, multiple different revenue sources. I think it's really important that the Commissioners understand that our revenue come from varying sources, but 55% of our revenue, we gain from local tax dollars and also fees for service that we're able to charge customers for some of the work that we do. So 55% of our revenue accounts for kind of those local dollars. Only 8% of our revenue comes from the state and 0% is state general fund. So any money that we get from the state of Montana to do the work of public health, it comes from a special revenue source of some kind at the state level. And then that leaves 37% of our revenue that comes from the federal government, which is a pretty significant amount of revenue for the Health Department and impacts our operations substantially. All right, we are going to start moving into some details now of the budget. I'm gonna attempt to keep the screen on the right page here. So this, the screen that you have in front of you and then page four in your packet, this represents the summary of the portion of our budget that is what we consider the mil. So this portion of our budget is funded by our local tax dollars as well as those fee for services. So money that we're able to collect at the local level is what accounts for this specific part of our budget. And our revenue for the mil portion of our budget is expected to be $2,624,848. And our expenses are expected to be $2,958,425. So again, we're looking at expenses over revenue for the mil portion of our budget by $333,000. Again, if you look at the previous column where it's the fiscal year '25 actual, we have an ending cash balance at this time of $715,000. And we're expecting at the end of fiscal year '25, so right now, we still have a bit of time left in this fiscal year, a month. We are projecting to have an ending cash balance at the end of fiscal year '25 of 1.3 million. So there's substantial and adequate cash balance at the end of this fiscal year to cover the negative that's planned for in the budget.
Drenda?
Yes, ma'am.
As you know, numbers kind of confuse me and so I am, I am not understanding how, for example, the budget for '24, '25, we have $1,364 and then the actual is only $715,568. I don't understand how, okay, revenues less expenses, the gray line.
The next line under that is our ending cash balance. So at the end of each of those, so if you go to the top of that column, this column here, it's the budgeted amount and what we budgeted or anticipated at the end of fiscal year '25. This is our actual. So at this point, or when we ran this report, which was just now a week ago, we were setting at a cash, ending cash balance of $715,000. So the difference between the two rows is what our ending cash balance is and then what is happening in the budget. So actual and the budget is expenses over revenue of 404. Does that make sense? And then what we're planning for in fiscal year '26 is in this last column. We're anticipating expenses greater than revenue again and we're using our cash balance to cover that.
Go back to the revenues. Do you just roll over from the previous year what you had left?
When there's a cash balance, it's going to be depicted here. So when, from one fiscal year to the other, that's exactly right. When we have a cash balance at the end of one fiscal year, that cash is available to use then in the next fiscal year.
Okay, okay, that does make sense.
Okay.
Thank you, Drenda.
Yes, ma'am. So I'll just pick up where I left off there then. We are expecting $333,000 of greater expenses than revenue and we'll have adequate cash. We're projecting 1.3 million at the end of the fiscal year. This amount that you see, the $715,000 cash balance as of now, does not account for the May collection of property taxes. So at the end of the fiscal year, we'll be closer to 1.3 million sitting in our cash, in the ending cash balance. So you all know that it's important to stay within that 33% of operations and for the 90-day reserve, which that amount, the 1.3 million of projected ending cash balance is way over that. It's, that's about 175 days worth of reserve. So I want to take just a moment and explain what the plan is for that, those additional funds that are sitting there. As I mentioned, 37% of our revenue comes from the federal government and we know at this point, there's some uncertainty when it comes to federal funding. And so in order to plan for loss of federal funding, which we know of, we know of some loss and we are planning for some loss, but we are fully aware that there could be more federal funding loss than we know of at this point. We are planning, what you see in the budget is $590,000 of the ending cash balance added to the budget, which is why we're negative $333,000. We added money into the budget to allow us to continue to operate and provide important public health services when we lose federal funding. And the amount, that amount that we are using to help cover federal funding loss is going to... I can show you where it is in the detail, but on this summary sheet, that $590,000 is represented in this overall operations and maintenance number here. And then within the detail of the budget, it's represented on page 7 and it's going to be lines 39-10, "Other purchases and contracted services." So let me give you, get to that page for you. So in the detail, on page 7 of your packet, 39-10, "Other purchases and contracted services," this amount, $672,000. That accounts for planned expenses that we know that we will need to be spending and also that $590,000 of anticipated lost funding from the federal government. So our plan is to be able to continue to do as much work as we can do when and if we lose federal funding and that's where those funds are, can be found in the budget. I'm gonna pause there before I move on and make sure that there are no questions about that. That's an intricate piece of the budget that I think is really important that you understand. So I'll pause there and see if there are questions.
Any questions, Andy?
Chair Payne, just a comment and maybe bringing in Mr. Cornwell. I think it's really prudent and smart to be anticipating what might be coming with the federal government. So as we've seen and know, there's going to be probably some reductions in public health funding. And so to be reserved for some of those services is great. We're in a really good position, it looks like to me. And Mr. Cornwell, your analysis, I'm sure you were in on this plan and where to put it and all that kind of stuff, so.
Chair Payne, Commissioner, yes. This, because Drenda's worked very, very hard on her budget for the past couple of years to get it in line to, you know, to be balanced and to, now it's, you have a surplus and the timing couldn't be more apt because of the current challenges that she's facing with all these budget cuts from the federal government. I think this is really appropriate use of these funds and we couldn't be here without the work that we all did a while back and the reorganizations and the approaches that you and your staff have taken specifically moving out the grant funds out of the mil levy. I think that really helped clarify as to what the mil levy 227 fund is doing and also the reorganizations that you have gone through the past couple of years have really benefited the overall financial situation for your department. So good job there and just, I think it's just an appropriate use of these funds for what, you know, the headwinds that are coming down for this department, so, good job.
Thanks, sorry to interrupt. Thanks, Chair.
I just, another clarification, Drenda. The $672,384 in the expenses, operation and management column, or on page 7, about $500,000 of that is what we would expect to get from the federal government, but probably won't, possibly won't. Is that my understanding right?
We're, we are, we know of at least one of our grants that we will be losing and so we're planning for those expenses, but there are so many that we don't know. So it is, it's our best guess as far as what we are anticipating losing in federal funding, so we, this is...
This is to cover the expenses that formerly were paid through the grant from the federal government?
Yes, ma'am.
You are so clever, Drenda, thank you for explaining that.
Absolutely.
To me, it just, no, it's clear, thank you.
And unfortunately, we don't know the details and so we're doing our best guess as far as planning for the loss of that revenue and how do we continue to do the work and have the expenses and not lay off a bunch of staff? And so we're planning for it in this way.
Thank you. Tom, do you have any questions? At this point? Okay, continue.
Two other items of note for our mil portion of the budget and both are represented on this page 7 detail. One is our subsidized programs. And so we subsidize three programs with our mil funding. Air quality is one of them. We only receive a small amount of money from the state of Montana to operate our air quality program. And so we subsidize that air quality program with another $25,577 of mil funding. And then licensed establishment, we get between $50,000 and $60,000 worth of funds that are collected from operators as, in the form of fees. And that money comes to the Health Department to do our restaurant inspections, pools and spas, public accommodations, trailer parks. So that program costs us a significant amount more than the $50,000 or $60,000 that we get from those fees. So we do subsidize licensed establishment with our mil funding. This year, we're planning on $347,051 of subsidy out of our mil in order to run that program. I'll pause there really quick and just say the legislature did pass the bill that is, that will allow those licensed establishment fees to be updated. And so starting next calendar year, so calendar year 2026, the operators will pay the increased fee and then we will, so we won't actually get to see that revenue until next fiscal year. You'll, that increased revenue will be accounted for in our fiscal year '27 budget. We expect it to about double. So if we're getting between $50,000 and $60,000 now from those fees, we can anticipate somewhere between $100,000 and $120,000 next year. But for now, that program is heavily subsidized by our local tax dollars. And then the third is our maternal-child health block grant. It is federal money that flows through the state, comes to the local Health Department to provide maternal-child health services. There's a required match of 75%. So in order to get those federal funds, we have to match those federal funds at 75%. So that amount is $48,316. And so when you add those three amounts up, it is represented in the budget on page 7 as this transfers out of funds of $420,000. So those are subsidized programs from the mil to other programs in the department.
Thank you, that's helpful.
And then the last piece before we move on from the mil budget is the capital improvement plan. So we anticipate contributing $30,000 into our capital improvement plan. Our capital improvement plan essentially has large expense items that we want to be able to in the future replace. We have seven vehicles in the Health Department. They're all a part of our capital improvement plan. We save to replace those vehicles over time. The $30,000 is our contribution into that capital improvement plan for this year.
Thank you.
Question on that, on that one?
Tom?
Is it, I see the last year, you put $150 in there and why the reduction to 30?
The $150 from last year was makeup amounts because it didn't happen the prior year. So you can see that under fiscal year '22, '23, I don't know what fiscal year we're in. Fiscal year '23, there was no contribution, so we had to do a double contribution to catch up and the year before. Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So 30 is about right for what we have sitting in our capital improvement plan to be replaced. All right, if there are no further questions on the mil section of our budget, I'll move us to the grants portion, which starts on page 8 of your packet. So pretty straightforward. We have 20 grants that we... We have 20 grants that we are anticipating in fiscal year 26. And that's an increase of two grants from last year. We anticipate $33,374,000 in grant funding. And we are planning for $3753,226 in expenses, which is expenses greater than revenue of And I'll bring your attention again to the ending cash balance from fiscal year 25 of $987,792. Those are the funds that will be used to cover the, that negative balance for fiscal year 26. And these are grant funds. So, our grant funders know that we're using funds from one fiscal year to the next fiscal year. Many of our grants are not on a county fiscal year. They're on a federal fiscal year. They start October 1. So, what you see is federal, you know, we have grant money sitting there that we'll just continue to use into the next fiscal year. So, but nothing out of the ordinary for our grants, other than what I've already described in that we are in, we are holding tight and hoping that it, we won't have a significant impact from federal grants. But there are so many unknowns at this point around our federal grants. So, we're doing the best that we can to plan accordingly. I wasn't going to go into any of the detail in the grants, which is the next couple of pages, unless you all had questions specifically on grant expenses.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Regarding this particular printout, page nine, under the intergovernmental revenues, which is the federal grants. Okay, that is, are any of these others federal grants? Or is that the entire amount we expect? Or that we got, let's see, the 24, 25 bit budget, we have $777,000. And then, 24, 25 actual is $428,964. So, is that the entire amount of the federal grants?
No, ma'am. We have a couple of other revenue lines within that same section. So, let me pull up the detail. Revenue. Wrong page. Here we go. So, the, you saw the first line, which does say federal grants. Their MCH block grant is also a federal grant. We account for that separately because we have to match it. And then, the federal grants, performance-based.
You mean, you have to match the MCH grant?
We do. The maternal-child health grant. So, we account, it just has its own line because it has to be treated special. So, performance-based federal grants, they are treated differently. So, they have their own line. So, we have a couple of revenue lines for federal grants, if that helps. We would have to add them together.
Yep.
To get the total.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other questions on our grant portion of our budget? Okay. On page 12 of your, of your binder, and then, I've put on the screen here for you our water quality protection district summary. And we'll just start again at the top. We are anticipating, so, let me first say, Water Quality Protection District has their own distinct revenue. It comes from assessments of properties that are within the Water Quality Protection District boundary, and that those funds have to be used specifically for Water Quality Protection District work. And so, that's where they get their revenue from. And we're anticipating $416,226 of assessment, water quality assessment for fiscal year 26. We are anticipating $485,252 in expenses. And again, we're looking at $69,026 of expenses greater than revenue. And then, I'll just point again to fiscal year 25, the $238,000 is ending cash balance. It's actually what's sitting there now. It's not what are our projected ending cashes. This is our actual balance as of now. That balance will be used to cover the $69,000 of expenses over revenue for fiscal year Nothing out of the ordinary for water quality. They are anticipating putting in $15,000 into their capital improvement plan. They have several items that they also save for replacement, mostly equipment that are specific to their operations. But otherwise, business as usual for Water Quality Protection District? Any questions for water?
So, the Water Quality Protection District is not dependent on grants that have disappeared?
That is correct. They do get small grants, usually project grants, usually state funding. And they are not anticipating any, any grant changes. And they are completely, they are completely operational with just their assessment dollars. They bring in extra to do fun projects.
That's good to hear. At least our water quality is not in jeopardy. Thank you.
They are doing quite well. I encourage you to go out on our website and take a look at the Grizzly Gulch story map underwater quality on our website. That project is coming to a, to a conclusion. And there's some beautiful pictures and description of that project that Water Quality has worked on.
I went out and, and was given a little tour of that project. But it's been about a year ago, and I'm sure they've accomplished much since then.
It's gorgeous now. It really is worth another peek, at least at the pictures.
Sure.
So, in conclusion, both the Board of Health and the Water Quality Protection District, they, they scrutinized these budgets. They asked the questions. And at both board meetings, they voted to recommend for approval to the Board of County Commission. And I'm, of course, available to answer any further questions you might have.
And you brought your posse. So...
I did.
We know you've got good...
I, I have this experts behind me that can answer all your questions, is what I have.
Okay. Tom?
I just, I just wanted to thank you for the way you've put this together this year. I think it's, I think it's being cautious since we don't know what's coming down from, on these, some of these grants. And, and you're trying to account for that possibility. You, you've got good reserves to, to help through a difficult time if we have to have it. It looks to me like you've accounted for things and the possibilities and the, and the problems that might come up. Thank you. I think it's, well done.
Thank you. Thank you.
Andy?
I don't have any questions, but I guess to pile on to my last verbal hug, you know, great work. And I really appreciate the, the budget, but also the work that you do in our community and, and how you persevere through challenging times, both pandemics and budget issues. So, we're really come to a, a bright spot. And I'm grateful for the work you've done to be here and, and the work you do in our community. So, thanks. Proud of everyone.
Okay. But I have a question, going back to your grants on the first page of the report. Grants, right now, you've got 20 grants in your, oh, you're, this is an increase of two grants. Can you tell us what those are?
Yes. We have a universal home visiting grant that we received that wasn't accounted for in last fiscal year, but we did receive it during this current fiscal year. So, we, it is now accounted for in the budget.
And how much was that grant? Do you know ballpark? Are we talking $20,000 or $200,000?
$100,000 a year. For not even two full years. It was an 18-month grant. It was this, it was a opportunity to pilot a new program.
Okay. And then, what was the other grant?
State opioid response.
Oh.
Was the other new grant that we received. Again, we received it in fiscal year 25, but it was not accounted for in our budget last year.
It was a surprise.
It came in the middle of the fiscal year. So, it is now accounted for in this, for next fiscal year.
Okay.
Frank, do you have any comments or questions?
Chair Payne, I, I, just to add to my earlier comments, good job, Drenda. And Heather, for all your help. And I, and I know that you run a very big, complex department with unique challenges. What is it? 40% is, is, comes from grants. And we know that you have to do the work in order to get the money. I know that's a challenge. And you guys seem to be on top of things. Just appreciate everything you do. And, yeah. So, thank you.
We are, thank you. We are grant management gurus. And if you don't mind, taking one minute.
I was just going to say, we have some extra time. And I would like to hear, one thing I'd like to hear about is the difference it's made now that you're in a different building.
Absolutely.
And, and how that has impacted you. And, yeah, give us a story here, Drenda.
Yeah. Last year, I, one of the things that we changed is we brought, we consolidated our staff from two facilities into one facility. It saved us about $46,000 in doing that. But I think the greatest benefit beyond the financial was team. We have team camaraderie now that, and just efficient, inefficiencies that we have now that we didn't have before. So, I have really appreciated having environmental health and water quality in the Murray Building with the rest of the department. And I think they've really enjoyed it as well. Yeah. We, once in a while, will have mud up and down the stairs from those that are working...
Maybe the water quality people are...
They're, they're working in the field and they have to get back to their office somehow. So...
Sure.
But other than a little bit of mud on the stairs, I'll take it because it's really great and absolutely more efficient to have them in the building. Yes.
I'm so glad to hear that. I was very concerned.
It worked out really well. We had, we did thoughtful change management to help make that transition easy on staff. We, we took the time and we made sure needs were being met, and we settled everybody into the space. We're a little crowded. I would, I'm not going to, I won't deny that we are stacked in on top of each other just a little bit. So, facility is, is still something that the Health Department needs to look at for the future. But I think this is, this fiscal year is a year of just holding tight because there are so many unknowns. But I would really like to have a conversation with the Commission in the near future about
Talk about turnover. Do you have much turnover in your department, or is everybody pretty much hanging tough?
Very, very great retention of our staff in the Health Department. You, you've experienced a couple of retirements out of the Health Department in the last two years, 30 years of service by staff who stay and commit their entire careers to public health. And that's what we continue to see as longevity with our staff and very little turnover.
Well, this is such a feel-good report, isn't it?
Even with our grant-funded work, we have longevity. So, oftentimes, grant-funded work comes and goes, and it's hard to find staff that are comfortable working within a little bit of uncertainty with grant funding coming and going. We have great staff that, that stick it out and help us find sustainable funding, and they're great. I do want to mention one staffing change that we, that came out of our reorganization. So, in, represented in the budget and accounted for in our personnel, we eliminated our three, our two divisions. So, two years ago, we had three divisions. Kathy retired. We consolidated to two divisions. And when Laurel retired in this, this past spring, we made the decision to redo a reorganization of our structure. And so, we no longer have divisions. We chose to hire a operations manager, who then will supervise all seven of our program supervisors. And I am really happy to introduce Fred to you today. He is our operations manager that was just hired and started his first day on Tuesday. So, we are well into it.
Okay, Fred. Come on. I'm sure we can find questions for him, can't we? Fred, could you tell us a little about your background, please?
Sure. Madam Chair, I'm with the Commission. So, I'm, I was just telling Commissioner Hunt-House earlier, so I was born and raised here in Helena. Born in St. John's Hospital. And we moved back about five years ago so my mom could live with us. And so, I always tell people I live a block from where I was born with my mom now. But I feel thrilled to be back here. I moved back in 2018. Prior to that, I spent about 23 years working for a technology company that worked with local and state government. Used to be called NIC, was then acquired by Tyler Technologies, which I know we do some work with here. And felt lucky to have that gig. But when I moved home, I really wanted to do something with local focus. And I really feel like I'm kind of in the catbird seat, being able to join this remarkable team at public health. It's sort of my third act as a, a career. And then, my expectation is to stay with this public health as my sort of next commitment until, you know, I'm ready to retire. Which I have a 13-year-old, so it's not going to be tomorrow. I'm trying to discourage him from any academic achievements, so we don't have to pay for college, but...
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, the other change that happened as a part of our structural reorganization was we added a grant specialist position. And you can see why. We have 20 grants that need managed. We need more grants to be applied for. And Sarah is now officially, as of this week, in that position as a grant specialist. So...
I didn't realize there had been a change in duties. Great.
Yes. So, we are officially launched into our new structure as of this week. All is well.
Okay.
So, I have a question about that.
Andy?
Go for it.
So, we will miss Sarah. Are we, are you still going to send her over now and then to?
Oh, my guess is, yes. She, you'll still see Sarah periodically. You'll see me periodically. Fred will jump in once in a while. You'll just get, you'll just get us all.
Right. Good.
We'd just like to know what's going on, since you're not in the building anymore. A little harder to keep track of you.
That's correct. You're wel, you are welcome to join us in the Murray Building anytime.
Oh, yeah.
And if you'd like to go play in the mud, I have a couple of staff that would be happy to take you out.
Thank you.
Just one thing that I'm meant to ask earlier. What's your total FTE this year? And I'm assuming it's, there's a little bit of adjustment from last year.
Yes. Our FTE officially is 40.67 because we have staff that don't work full-time. And so, it's on page two of my memo at the, towards the top.
Okay.
We do have, we did have a couple of staffing changes. We added the universally offered home visitor, which is a grant-funded position. We also increased the opioid prevention and safer communities coordinator from a part-time to a full-time position, which is different from last year. And then, the reorg that I just described with eliminating two division administrators, adding in the operations manager and the grant specialist position. So, we're, we're right about the same amount of staff. We just are, just a slight variation from last year.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Frank? Roger? Okay. Now, I have to do this. Is there any public, any comments from the public? Seeing none, we will end this part of our budget meeting. Thank you, Drenda. It's good all of you came to help. Good afternoon. We are moving into the next section of our fiscal year 2026 budget presentation. And right now, we have the pleasure of hearing what's going on in the Treasurer, Clerk and Recorder's Office. So, Amy, come on up.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, good afternoon. Thank you for having me. Today, I'm presenting my budget for the 2026 fiscal year. I'll start with just a summarization of all of my departments. But I'll just mention that I have the clerk, I have the Elections Department, the Property Tax Department, Motor Vehicle, the Accounting Department, and our Records Department. So...
What were the last two?
Accounting and records.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, our personnel budget is going to be increased quite a bit this year. It's due to the increase in the 2.13% COLA, some step increases, and the health plan contribution. It's due to the increase in the 2.13% COLA, some STEP increases and the health plan contribution. We also had some matrix adjustments to our clerk ones and clerk twos to help us with longevity of our employees. The personnel budget for the elections has been increased by one FTE. We are also, we are asking for it to be increased. Our citizens and our population has grown and we have a need to add an additional employee there. We're hoping to do some cost savings from hiring temps though. And we're also hoping to have that person help us with some longevity of knowing how to do certain processes. Our property tax budget, we're also increasing our personnel by one FTE, but we are reclassifying one of our motor vehicle FTEs. Our fixed charges have increased over $51,000 due to the cost of our motor vehicle personnel needing to have access to county network, email, software packages. Those used to be the responsibility of the State of Montana DOJ and those costs have transferred over to the county. We also have costs that were previously budgeted in our O&M, but because of financial reporting requirements, it's part of that $51,000, we had to move it there. And we have some additional rent for our election processes. We also have a comparison that we'll, I'll get into here in just a minute, that when we look at our 25 budget, we only had two elections. We had the school election and we had, with our special districts, and we had the presidential general election. This coming fiscal year, we're going to be having at least four elections. We have two school elections, we may be having a municipal primary, but we will be having a municipal general election. And then, in the, in the spring, we're going to have our primary election, which, when we come to the primary, it is at least three times the ballots, if not four times, depending on how many parties are on the ballot. So, it's an increased cost in quite a few of my areas. Recent legislation has also caused some added workload and staff time and other administrative costs. We are dealing with a conversion to cars for our motor vehicle transactions. So, we have, we're seeing those related expenses. They have also put the, not only the cost of having technology, but the actual cost of the equipment on us too now. So, we are seeing the maintenance and support and replacement of those items as a county expenditure. The county is also replacing their finance system, which we should be going live July 1st. This will affect our accounting division's budget for personnel costs related to working extra hours and additional O&M costs, O&M costs related to the training costs. We expect that conversion will need additional staff time. So, I'm just gonna get my budget open here real quick. I'm gonna move over here if that's okay. All right, you will see, can you hear me? Are you able to hear me okay? It just, there we go.
Thank you.
Sorry. I have brought it up on the screen there. You'll see on our Elections Division budget, we did increase quite a bit. My FTEs in total, I have 34.46 FTEs and we are asking for that one additional. You will see that at the bottom there in 18, even though we have on line, row 18, the miscellaneous payroll, that's $65,000 is the person that we're going to be moving from our motor vehicle budget into our, oh, sorry, this is our additional FTE that we are asking for in our Elections Department. And then, we also have overtime and temporary costs that are adding to it because of those four elections. Plus, again, the COLA and just the health insurance and everything that's been going on this year. Our O&M for our Elections Department has also increased quite a bit. Again, we are dealing with four elections versus two. The good news is, is our city and our municipal and our school elections, we get reimbursed the cost. So, even though my budget is more for those things, we will be being reimbursed for those costs. And then, the fixed charges just went up a little bit. So, you'll see my overall budget in my elections on row 65 went up about $300,000. And I'm expecting about $200,000 in reimbursement for those extra elections. I'm gonna go down to our Records Department. There isn't a lot of change in the personnel cost, just, like I said, the normal stuff that's happening every year with increase in COLA and increase in longevity, so our STEP increases. And then, of course, health insurance seems to go up. Our O&M, we actually went down. We are trying to be very fiscally responsible this year and analyze things a little closer. And we were able to come down a little bit on that one. And our fixed charges, of course, went up just a little bit. Do you have any questions for me before I move on?
I have a question. Amy, you mentioned that in your, in the Elections Budget, there's, we do elections for the city and it's included in your budget. Can you show me where, and you said they reimburse us, where does the reimbursement...
Chair Payne?
Oh, yes.
Amy, just, just for clarity, when it comes to the general fund revenues that we received, because Amy, is it part of the general fund? That is, that's gonna be part of our overall presentation that you'll see. So, it's, it's just easier to look at all revenues all at one time. And that is a future meeting, I think it'd be part of our preliminary budget hearing. And you'll see all revenues into the general fund. So, these, you've seen a few general fund presentations today and you'll notice that none of them had the revenues to show the offsets cost there because all of the revenue for those funds are part of the general, which will be presented at a later date.
Didn't Public Health just show us a bunch of revenues?
Correct. But the Justice Court did not and neither did the county attorneys. And then, I remember there was a...
But Public Health did.
Public Health did, because Public Health does not participate within the general fund.
That is the point I needed. Thank you very much. All right. Continue.
And if you don't mind, I'll add to that too. Our general fund is set up for administration, which would be all the administration that you need for the county where the Health Department has its own type of services.
Okay, that's great.
Okay. All right. So, I'll go ahead and continue. I'll get past my, back down here on my Excel spreadsheet here. And I'm going to my Property Tax Division. In our Property Tax Department, we do have one additional FTE that we are moving our motor vehicle position to a property tax position. We feel there's a need to have separation of duties, but also some extra training. So, we have coverage in that department when someone that is critical isn't gone. The motor vehicle position, that motor vehicle FTE that we are taking out of that department, we've had extremely hard time filling that position over the last couple of years. And it just seems to always be open. We may fill it for a month and then it's open again. So, we felt that it was better used in our Property Tax Department so that we aren't behind on our tax bills. And again, the same salary expenses that all the other departments are seeing is hitting that too. Our O&M, our operations and maintenance, again, we've tried to do things as, as close to last year as we could with, so we tightened our budget a bit even though the costs are increasing. So, there wasn't a lot of change in the operation and maintenance. And then, of course, we went, we actually go down a little bit in our fixed charges. And I'm gonna just scroll down. Do you have any questions on our property tax budget? Okay?
Just, Madam Chair.
Yes, Andy.
Just about that new position, you were talking about someone who has the capacity to kind of know, I guess, know everything in the department there. And I think that's critical. You and I have talked in the past about really planning for the future and having, knowing that none of us are gonna be in these positions forever. So, people either move on or they retire or whatever it might be. So, being prepared with staff to have that knowledge, we all know what happened in, actually, November, December. And part of that was, I mean, there's all kinds of things that went into that. But, but a chunk of that is making sure that we have people there that can, can do the work and know the work. So, I'm anticipating that part of this new, this transfer, this position into property taxes for that purpose, to really have that, build that institutional knowledge and kind of a bench of people that will be able to move into positions of wherever you need them, I guess. Is that true?
Yes, Madam Chair, Mr. Commissioners, Andy Hunhausen there. We, we actually have one of our employees that is talking about retirement also. So, having someone come in and start learning those processes before we lose an employee is extremely important. And then, also to have that backup between the other, other staff in our office so that not just one person knows how to do certain things. We're hoping to do a lot of cross-training so that we don't run into those types of situations again.
Madam Chair, if I could, just a long, kind of off the budget, but the, the spring collection, everything's going okay, everything, because the, the requests went out, we sent them both out in November, right, or in December, whenever we did. So, now people are taking their tab and paying their spring portion of their property tax. Any issues there? We're doing okay?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, no, we are doing just fine on that. Our, our coupons for our May and November bill went out when, our December bill for last year went out at the same time. So, everybody got their coupons. And this year, it falls on a weekend, so it's actually due June 2nd instead of May 31st. So, in our, in our finances, we'll see a little bit different compared to past years because if you're looking at May, your May revenues may be down a little bit, but your June revenues should cover those. The one thing I will say is our mobile home and personal property tax bills will be late this year due to new legislation. And the DOR was holding the values of those properties because of legislation. So, we're getting those out, but we are hoping to have them due June 30th. So, still hoping to get them in this fiscal year. But again, we do, we do accept postmark dates, so we may be getting some of those revenues in July.
Not, not our, our issue. I mean, this is a state thing that we're...
Correct. We were waiting on the state on those.
Thank you. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right.
Amy, I've got a few other questions.
Okay.
As I've told other people, I'm kind of number challenged. So, I see these things and just inquiring minds want to know. I'm looking on page five of 12, Personnel total, no, it's the one right under Personnel. So, the, under Minor Equipment, the budget from 23 to 24 appears to have doubled. And then, for 25, it's doubled again. And then, the postage box rent went from $24,000 to $46,000? Has there been, I mean, is this, am I reading this right?
You, you are reading it correctly. I'll start with the minor equipment. So, with a new employee, we, we are budgeting to add a desk. We have...
I'm sorry, could you speak louder?
Sorry. We, with a new position, we have to have the work space for them. We have to have a desk, we have to have all the equipment they're going to need. So, yes, we did increase it. And I have some notes here, let me grab those, sorry.
The cost of the FTE isn't just the wages, it's also a desk and office equipment for them and we don't have anything that could be used?
We're going to use what we can. We're gonna move the motor vehicle computer over, but the desk that's in motor vehicle is, it's a partition that's connected to two desks, so it's not something we can use. But we're gonna try to do what we can. And I just want to go into my stuff here to see what I have budgeted.
Thank you.
The other thing I did budget for this year is I have to do an RFP for, for credit cards. And so, we're asking for money to, for new credit card machines and property tax would have more of those machines. Some of the other departments in the county may be affected by that too. So, that's part of that minor equipment. So, it's an upgrade. But let me look on here. So, I have some notes, so I can look at it a little closer. Oh, and then, yes, we, we are getting a chair mat for that new position. We are hoping to use some of the equipment we have, but we're not quite sure. I did budget over $1,000 for those credit card machines. That's part of that, that $5,500 that you're looking at. And then, on the other question you had in the postage, I did budget more in variable postage. So, we're, we are, we're sending out delinquent tax reminders, we send out their tax bills. And so, we are just budgeting more to cover those. But when you look at 23 and 24, those are actual costs versus the actual budget. We budgeted in, in 25, the $46,000, and we have changed and we are trying to use bulk mailers. But at this time, some of the things, we weren't quite sure how it was going to affect us. So, I went off of last year's budget to budget this year. That doesn't mean I might, I might not spend it, which is great because if they can save us in the bulk mailing, then we're great. But I did budget for it just in case.
Okay. And then, the next line, the print duplicating, typing, binding, there again, it's gone up $4,000? And maybe $4,000 isn't all that much, but you add it all together and...
Yes.
It worries me.
On the cost of printing and binding, we do source some of that out, like our property tax bills. So, if their rates go up, we need to budget a little bit more. Some of those, we are doing ourselves, but we have talked about outsourcing those for motor, or mobile homes and personal property. Right now, we do them in-house. But if by chance, we have an issue like we did last December and November where we're doing, we're outsourcing those, we may need to outsource them this year. So, I did budget for that.
Okay, thank you. Let's continue.
Okay. All right.
Oh, I'm sorry. Andy, Tom, any questions? Okay.
Okay, great. I'm gonna go ahead and go down past Property Tax and we'll go to our motor vehicle budget. Even though the, if you'll see, the personnel budget went up and we are moving an FTE out of there. I have a, I left 16 FTEs in motor vehicles, so those COLA and health insurance and STEP increases are hitting us a little harder because that's my largest department. And you'll see on line 72, the bulk of that is my health insurance hitting my budget. All right. I'm gonna go ahead and go down to our operations and maintenance. And we went down on our operations and maintenance. We are a little, little more frugal on the postage. We're hoping things are going to be less. We have gone to a new system. So, looking at our budget for 25, I analyzed that and we're, we're hoping we stay in line with that. But in 23, you can see in our postage, we were at $82,000. So, hopefully, it'll, it'll get us through. Our office and machines went down, mostly because when we went to our new equipment with the DOJ giving us all the equipment and we weren't really sure what equipment they were supplying versus what equipment we were going to have to supply. So, you're seeing that difference. And again, motor vehicle will also be affected by those credit card machines. Each of the clerks will need to have their own swipers. So, that is gonna hit that budget a little bit harder again, 16 employees versus a possible four in, in our Property Tax Department.
Amy, would you say that again?
Our office machine...
I'm having a hard time here, understanding what you're saying.
Our office machines, last fiscal year, we budgeted $30,000 because when we went to cars, the Department of Justice was giving us equipment, but we weren't sure if those were new computers or used computers. We weren't sure if we were gonna have to replace printers. They had said they were gonna do the scanners. We weren't positive all that was gonna happen. We had some issues when we went live with our extra four windows and had some costs that even though it was state equipment, we had to cover. So, we were trying to be, we just wanted to make sure we had enough last year to cover those costs. So, this year, we found what costs we don't have, but we do need to replace some very old printers. We have new credit cards... We have new credit card software, new credit card vendor that we may possibly need to go with, which includes new credit card machines to swipe them. And I have 16 employees in motor vehicle, at least I'm budgeting for 16 versus 17. And our property tax department only had four. So you can see the increase in costs. There will be almost about $5,000 for credit card swipers, I'm estimating.
Thank you, Amy.
Yes. And then, the biggest hit that we had to our motor vehicle department was our technology in our fixed charges is our technology. Again, it used to be supported by the Department of Justice, is now supported by our county IT fully. So those costs have gone up for those employees. Do you have any questions on my motor vehicle budget?
Chair Payne.
Go for it.
Andy? I just, yeah, I'm kind of still bumming about the State Department of Justice not paying for the things they used to pay for, but that's the reality we live in, and that's where we are. So, but I just was curious about the cars. Transition went well, is going well. Do you feel like the system is working? We haven't had, I would say, not as many customers knocking on our doors or phones in the last couple of months, probably. So how's that gone?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, the cars is just like any other software conversion that you do. There's always going to have problems that arise, things that we need to work that don't work. But our county is getting through it. We had some very active people on the transition. We still, there are some things that aren't working quite right. There's some things that we're going to have to fix in the software. But again, any software conversion you do, you're going to see those types of things happen. As for our citizens coming in, and hopefully, the time is going to be quicker. It seems like it's quicker, but I can say that we are scanning now all the documents, as things that we didn't used to have to do. I did add a little bit more in overtime and things like that, because I'm not really sure, with us having added things, if it's going to actually cost us more or if the speed of their software will counteract that. But the summertime lines that we get in, it seems like we've had a really slow May. I'm not sure if people aren't buying right now because of the economy, or if it's because the weather hasn't been super great and we're just starting to warm up and we'll see more customers come in. I guess time will tell. And we have shifted a few things. We now have a check-in window so that they can check their paperwork, so we don't have customers waiting in the hall to find out that they don't have all the paperwork they need. So hopefully, hopefully, everything is, you know, transitioning well, and hopefully, it'll continue to transition well through the summer.
Good. And staff generally is, I mean, I'm sure there's some things about the system they don't like, but think it's going to be better in the long run? I mean...
I think it will be. There's a lot of things that are definitely a plus to the system and that they're liking. It's just so much different on where you find things or how you do things that we're still adjusting.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
We had the Justice of the Peace budget earlier today, and I came up with the idea of combat pay for some of their employees, and maybe that would be something we need to offer down in your department as well. Tom, did you have anything?
And then if we were able to add the one position in our elections, we'll have 35.46. But I do bring in quite a few temps. We have about 30 temps that come in, normally 20 to 30 during election time. And basically, this year, we're looking at about nine months of elections. So it'll be a big process for us. And then, of course, we have our federal election, which will be bringing in over 300 election judges.
But your full-time would be the 34.46?
That's correct.
Or your full-time and regular employees, not just the...
Just the full-time, yes, regular employees.
Full-time and part-time employees.
Not the part-time.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I'll go ahead and go down to our accounting department to their budget. We had some longtime staff resign, and we are, you'll see, our salaries actually went down, even though we have some additional costs this year with COLA and some step increases. But again, we've lost some of our full-time, long-term employees that were higher level pay. And we're hiring right now, a couple of positions. And we have our fiscal year-end coming really closely, and we have a software conversion. So we're extremely busy down there. I did budget more in overtime and a little bit more in temporary salaries, or I guess I actually rounded down a little on temp salaries. And then, we were expecting a little bit of an increase due to promotion plans this year. And if I go down here to our operation and maintenance, we pretty much stayed the same. We tried to keep things as close as we could. I will note that we have this credit card charge here on line 227. The county does not absorb that credit card charge. That is something that the taxpayer, if they choose to use, our credit card services are responsible for. Due to financial requirements, MCA requirements, we have to record that expense in our system. And Frank will record that revenue in our general fund. So it is offsetted, but it does look a little bit high. All right. And then lastly, we have our fixed charges here for our accounting department. And luckily, we were able to shave off a little bit of that expense, too. Do you have any questions for me on our accounting department's budget?
Amy, I'm having a problem moving from what's on the screen to what is in our printed book. And so, could you help me a little bit? Because we don't have the line numbers.
Okay.
And so...
Let me see if I can make this bigger.
Commissioner, I don't know if it helps you at all, but of course, we're on page 10.
Well, and I've got a whole inch this is.
Yes.
I'm just trying to change it so we can see what page we are on.
This is probably on...
So it's going to be okay. All right. It's a little bit big. Let's see. We're on, yeah, we're on page 10. I'm just going to scoot this up a little bit and see if we can, maybe, maybe not. Nope.
All right.
All right. Do you have any questions for me on the accounting department's budget?
Thank you for guiding me through. I now find where I am.
Okay. Let's see. I'm just trying to fix this a little bit, but it is not liking me. Get it to where we can see it a little bit better. There we go. Okay. I'm going to go ahead and go down to our records preservation fund. In our records preservation, we have our personnel budget. We stayed pretty close to there. It's just the COLA step increases in health insurance. And then down to our operations maintenance, we just went up slightly. We're trying to keep that budget as close as it was to last year. And then down here, at the very end, our fixed charges did go up a little bit due to software agreements. So when we look at my overall budget, we look at the fiscal year '25 versus this current fiscal year that we're going to. And I do not have it on the spreadsheet, but let me type it in here. With that being said, my personnel has gone up with the COLAs, the step increases, the health insurance, and the one FTE by $291,000. The elections, the operation and maintenance, even though I'm having four elections this coming year versus, versus two, went up $98,000 in total, and my fixed charges went up $51,000. Again, that $51,000, majority of it is motor vehicle and needing those IT to help cover our employees. And please note that on our $291,000 increase in personnel, I also had to add to our temps and our overtime because of having a primary election and having three other elections this coming year. Do you have any questions for me?
Andy, do you have anything?
Not about this particular section.
Okay. Tom, anything on this section?
I don't think so.
All right. I think Andy's got bigger things on his mind. Go for it.
Well, I just wanted to go back, I'm thinking of bigger picture, you know. The times you and I have discussed things, talking about bigger pictures. The person that you're, the one FTE you're asking for, the new one, right, that's in elections?
It is.
Yeah. And so, back to elections a little bit. But the overall kind of long-term plan there, we've talked about everything from elections administrator to just adding folks and trying to, I mean, like, we've just gone through, you have multiple divisions under your hat. So I just want to discuss that a little bit and what that looks like for your long-term vision for things there.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I've discussed with Commissioner Hunhausen, I've talked to Roger Baldts about the need for an election administrator. It takes about 60% of my time. So it's huge, and I don't have as much time to focus on my other departments that need my assistance.
Amy?
Mm-hmm.
What does...
I'm sorry, EA, election administrator?
The man you've got down there, whose name is...
Connor is our, he's our election supervisor. So he supervises the department, but the election administrator by law has a lot of separate duties that they have to do, they have to sign, they have to be present, whatever it might be.
Are we required to have an elections administrator and an elections, what, coordinator?
Supervisor.
Supervisor, okay.
We're not. One of my titles is the election administrator. As you probably all know, I have like seven titles in the five departments. So the election administrator, out of those seven different titles, tends to take most of my time. And unfortunately, there's times where I am not able to focus at all on my other departments. It's really strange, because the election time falls exact same time as the property tax time, and exact same time as we're dealing with our fiscal year-end or our audit. So it does cause quite a burden. I think in the long-term, an election administrator would be very handy to have in the office. It's not enough, the election supervisor has enough to do on his plate that he also needs assistance. So being able to have an election administrator to help with that would be very handy. The position I'm asking for is an election clerk. We have some very long-term temporary employees that have been helping us out for years, and they're wanting to basically retire or help us as little as possible, you know, certain things, but not be here 24 hours on election night. And, you know, truly, I can understand where they're coming from. They're retired, and that's long hours. And unfortunately, legislation isn't changing to help us not be here continuously, whether it's 30 hours or 35 hours or 24. Those are, those two positions that are my two temps that are looking at not assisting in the future, the knowledge that they have, none of my staff has. I need to have a full-time county employee that knows certain processes so that we aren't left in a bind and have nobody that knows how to do those processes. And that's my goal. Plus, we do have some long-term employee that are very, very close to retirement age. We have one long-term employee. All of my departments, the property tax and the elections department, they have felt the growth of our community, but we're still at, we are still at three employees in each of those departments, and that is a huge strain. So I'm hoping to have a clerk that can come in and help us with preparing polling place stuff that nobody else has ever done, help us with running the absentee stuff, running, you know, mailing out the ballots, everything that they just take and they supervise and they do. We don't have staff that does that now. And I think that we really need to have staff that knows how to do some of those processes and can actually hopefully retain those employees so that there is, you know, some hopeful training in the future. But the elections, when we're doing elections, there isn't time to train another staff member because you're so busy trying to get done what you need to do, especially with just three of us in the office, or three of them in the office.
Amy, Lewis and Clark County is not the most populous county in our state. How do the other big communities deal with their elections? Are they having the same problems you are?
The, I can tell you, the Missoula County has a clerk and recorder, they have a treasurer, and they have an election administrator, and their election administrator has a deputy under him that helps him with all of the election processes. And I believe they also have clerks, too, like we do.
Is the election supervisor in Missoula an elected position? Or was that appointed by, I mean, is that a hired position?
Their election administrator, which would be me and my position, is a hired position in Missoula County. The clerk and recorder is a elected position, as far as I know. And then, like I said, he had, the election administrator also has a deputy, which would be more like Connor being my supervisor in elections under him, that help him with all those processes. And then I believe they have quite a few clerks.
Go ahead, Andy.
Commissioner, I mean, that's exactly why I wanted to talk about this. And we don't get a chance, you know, the three commissioners and all of us together get a chance to discuss these things very often, because we have to do it in a public setting. And so, I just wanted to take the opportunity, because I'm trying to think ahead and planning, and we know that we're growing. We know right now, we can say, well, we think we really are going to need an elections administrator and another clerk potentially, and all the things that you're talking about. So we need to have a discussion about that, from my perspective. We need to be talking about if not now, when, why not now? Is this an opportunity to start moving forward? What would that look like? How would we fund it? Where, all the things. Because elections is not going to get, they're not going to get any easier. We've seen already this legislative session, last legislative session.
And what if Amy has a heart attack and dies?
That's right.
All her knowledge, I mean, we're going to have to start over.
And Amy is, I mean, the election administration is relatively neuter. I mean, she's really getting seasoned because of under fire the last few years. But that was not your forte prior to, prior to being in your position. And like you said, now it's taking up 60% of your time, and when you have four other or whatever divisions and, you know, that you have to be responsible for. So this might be the opportunity to discuss this. And I think with our finance officer, who kind of understands the bigger picture, with Roger, who's looking at the bigger picture as well, and our commissioners, just what's the reality of our future here? And if we are going to think about and look at an elections administrator, and that, what that means, because that's essentially, you're handing off elections to that person, you or, or it could be you supervising them, or it could be supervised out of, you know, Roger's office, depending on how we set it up. But all those things would have to be discussed. And then, how do we sustain that position? And is it an opportune time to look at that or not?
You know, we have until 3:30. We have, what, about an hour here? So we could talk about those things. And Andy's point, the three of us are precluded by law from talking about this, when the three of us could actually put our heads together and maybe come up with some ideas. So maybe we could just use like a half an hour here to discuss this. Frank, do you have any suggestions? You look like you do.
Chair Payne, Commissioners, I think that Amy's approach here is, it's appropriate. I think she definitely needs an additional FTE within her elections division. The, and I'm trying to read what Hunhausen's trying, Commissioner Hunhausen's trying to... The, and I'm, I'm trying to read what Hunt-Housen's trying, Commissioner Hunt-Housen's trying to say here, I think, are you suggesting that you want to move to maybe getting an, an EA sooner or than later or, or the elected administrator? I believe the big seven,
Yeah.
all of them have them except for us.
Right.
And we're the la, we're the last man standing without-
Big seven counting?
Yeah, so of the big seven, yep. So I think that we can sustain the additional FTE from a financial standpoint, from a clerk standpoint and if we want it, if I do hesitate to go to two, two additional FTEs, I would prob, I would, it would be, my recommendation is to go with one additional FTE, whether it's an EA or the clerk, either one, up to Amy and where she wants to go with things, I know she has some good rationale behind trying to start with the clerk and trying to replace the, the, the people that are, the legacy, I guess, temporary employees that come in on a regular basis and they have a lot of, a lot of knowledge that they need to transfer over to the, to our staff, so I think that I'd be interested to see, to hear your guys' thoughts on this, this is the first time I've had this, I've had this-
That's because we're not allowed to talk.
So Roger's got thoughts as well, so.
Well, I really would like to see this put on somebody else's plate other than Amy, she has got so much going on and if we could just pull elections away, her life would be easier. Is there some way we could, and maybe Roger has some theories on how this is going to work, Roger?
Well, Commissioner Payne and Commissioners, what a great conversation to have, I want to start that way. Maybe I could start like this. This isn't the first time we've discussed this, Amy's been good enough to give me, you know, her time to talk specifically about this and whatever we do, we want it to be done in a spirit of everybody being in agreement about what we want to do, that's what you've shared with me. And I, I'm not going to speak for anybody except myself, but we have discussed this and what I've taken away from our conversation is that Amy, that you have not felt supportive of doing an election administrator structure this fiscal year, I seem to recall you saying maybe next fiscal year in one of the meetings that we had and Amy is our independent elected official who is responsible for these duties and responsibilities, so whatever we do, I just want it to be done in a spirit of us all communicating with each other, it being done in a spirit of agreement. But the issue has been, and this isn't the first time that Amy, I've, I've heard you express all the different titles you have and it's been done, you know, the thought has been, you have a very heavy workload and the 60% number of elections dominating, you know, your workload has been kind of front and center on this. There are many examples around the state of Montana of counties who have gone to election administrators, some of them in a very cooperative way and some of them not in a cooperative way, all right? So the, we can do this Commissioners, is what I would say, but the vision that Amy has shared with me is that it's not the vision of how, again, I don't want to look, go into speaking for Amy, but what I've taken away from our conversations is that, that is not your vision for the coming fiscal year to do this, that the clerk position has been what you desire, but, and as far as how it could be structured and then I'll-
Not clerk and recorder?
Elections clerk.
Elections clerk.
I'm sorry, election clerk and recorder, but as you just heard from Mr. Cornwell, financially, it's a model that could work for us. But we, we all want to be successful, I want to say that too, we, we want our elections office to have the resources to be successful, perform elections the way we need them to now and into the future. This, this method of having an election administrator has been adopted by many, many other counties, it has. Seems to work well from them, from what little I've seen and I'm no expert on who's doing what, it sounds like Amy and Frank know quite a bit more about that. But, you know, those are some of the pieces Commissioners, what I've heard from you has, has been that you're intrigued by the idea that you would like to discuss it more and possibly move in that direction, but in full discussion and cooperation with Amy Reeves, right? So that's kind of an overview, I, I know I'm not telling Commissioners, you or Amy, anything you haven't already heard or don't already know, but I mean, that's kind of a summary of going that direction. But I, I guess those were, are just the comments I would offer to you, as far as how to structure this, if hypothetically, there were an elections administrator. You can structure it, I think Commissioner Hunt-Housen, you mentioned this, it can be a position that reports to Amy Reeves, it could be a position that reports to your CAO, my position, or it could be a position that reports to the county commissioners. Those models exist all over the state, but I'll share with you that I have observed that when Amy is in charge of something, she has a very appropriate and a very deep ownership over those issues. And so if the position is going to continue to report to Amy hypothetically, I think that Amy Reeves would feel compelled to devote substantial amounts of her time to overseeing that position. So again, that's a piece of this I would just encourage us to be thoughtful about because part of what we're thinking about is based on the heavy workload, if I could say it that way, that Amy Reeves already has in her position. So if we're going to do something, I would hope it would be something that lessens that workload in some way, so those are just a few comments.
Procedural question, is election administrator part of the title for the clerk treasurer? So that is part of your elected responsibility?
Yes.
Okay, I think that's something I would-
Unless you hire an election administrator, then that's in, then that person would be-
Is that in the law? I mean, how, I, I would like to have something, where's Nico when I need him? If that is-
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioners, the election administrator in our county is, is part of being the clerk and recorder. Some clerk and recorders are the election administrators, especially in your smaller counties and that falls under them, but it is a combined, I guess is what they would call it, position and the, you know, I, I really feel the clerk, the elections clerk is needed immediately, which is why I put that in my budget this year because we, we need to have somebody know how to do those processes and we need to have, you know, I, I don't want to hit the primary and not know how to do a bunch of stuff and, and not have the ability to, or time to, to vote to it. The EA we had talked about doing first and then the clerk, but the EA is so busy on election day that you don't have time to do the duties that I want that clerk to do, so that's, that's where I was like, no, I think we need the clerk first and it doesn't do the EA any, it doesn't do them any good to learn those processes because you're not going to be able to do them anyway because you're too busy with other things during the election time, so that's where I was like, no, we need that election clerk first. The, I'm not against the election administrator being hired out in the next fiscal year, I just was being, trying to be fiscally responsible and trying to stretch it out a little bit. If you were considering the EA or the election administrator hiring out in fiscal year 26, it would give them a school election, a city election before a primary or a federal election. So if you hire them in 27, they're going straight into a federal election being the general. So there's, there is pluses and minuses to it.
Could we maybe steal somebody who is experienced from one of those other counties, get them to come over here so that they're not starting from, you know, the first grade, they're actually up and have some experience? So Amy actually has some help that she doesn't have to hold their hand for the first six elections?
I think, I think part of it, you know, Connor could hopefully help with that process, his, you know, his position would hopefully be able to help with that process. A lot of what I do is probably, you know, Excel related, budget related, numbers related too, so just having, you know, trying to get rid of some of that would be helpful, but also I don't mind continuing to help out doing the clerk and recorder, you know, the election department's budget, I don't mind helping doing the canvas, I don't mind helping doing all those number things, that's, my forte is, is accounting, so that's when I have talked to my supervisor, I was like, you know, I don't, I don't envision just dumping the elections department and saying, there you go, you know, I don't mind continuing to assist where I can.
Chair Payne, just to echo that, and Roger already alluded to this, Amy owns her work.
I know.
And she, if we transition to an EA, I'm comfortable enough to say, to say she will be available to help in that transition and probably do more than what is expected because that's just her nature and we're very lucky with her and, and her approach in this position, so I, I'm, I'm not worried about the knowledge transfer and, and Amy just kind of floating away and doing the other things, I think this would be a transition for her and more than willing to, to help with that, that knowledge transfer.
But if we had a person who came into the job with some existing experience, that she might, he or she might have some suggestions as to how things are run, it would be more helpful than, so that Amy is not carrying the entire burden.
So Chair Payne, just to add to what I was saying, we, we see a lot of of sharing of knowledge and, and processes across all of our counties, we, Amy and I are part of email streams with, with other CFOs and treasurers, we talk with them all the time, election administrators. I would harbor to guess, and it wouldn't be much of a guess, they will, an elections administrator from Missoula would probably be more than willing to come and help us. They are very passionate about this role and they, I can't imagine them not wanting to share his knowledge. This is something I've seen across all the counties in this, in Montana, when I have a question when it comes to finances, I'll send out an email blast to all CFOs in the, in the state of Montana and I get a response almost immediately and, and most of the time it's, it's multiple responses, I'll even get a phone call. So I think there's a lot of resources out there that we could utilize to help with that transition. We also, not to throw him under the bus and he probably doesn't want to do it, but we also have Casey Hayes in the House who used to be an elections administrator, so if he wanted to help maybe to, I, I don't want to volunteer him, but it's just an interesting fact that we have a former elections administrator in the House.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, too, to answer, you know, your question, any, anybody that would be stepping into like an EA position very possibly would have to move from another county that wasn't EA there at some point in time, so that, you know, you may not find somebody who was a prior election administrator, but you may find somebody who has some prior election experience and, and any experience is better than none for sure, so.
I really appreciate the tip about Casey Hayes, that's-
I don't think he'll be helping on the election process.
Yeah, he's probably very upset with me.
He's retired out of that for a very good reason.
Chair Payne, the-
Not Andy, yes?
If I, just along those lines though, I would say that likely in the recruitment and our, and in our our expectations for those people that might apply, they'd have to have experience, well, at least like a, like where Connor is, a supervisor or something like that. So they wouldn't come in cold off the street not knowing anything about elections, we would require that they had some elections experience, I'm, I'm assuming. And so I'm, I'm not too worried about that part of it, there still would be a steep learning curve and all that and, and adaptation to things, but and then I was just going to say that I wasn't necessarily advocating that we do it all at once right now, I mean, if that's what the team wanted to do or felt like that was the best move, that's fine, I did want to talk about whether EA first or second, I'm getting kind of the understanding of why that is the way it is, but I'd also like to encourage us to develop a plan, so if we did a clerk this year, what is our plan for, you know, if we all agree that eventually we're going to want to establish an EA, elections administrator, how that would work, when we would do it, are we making sure that we're looking, forecasting for the financial side of it and all of those kinds of things? So if we did consider it for next year, for example, you know, is, can we do it? So I'd like us to get that planning going now and I think we've all been thinking about it quite a bit and then where it would be housed, I mean, whether you were involved or not in helping out, could that on a day-to-day be supervised by Roger? Would that be the best way to do it so that you could be really freed to do the other work? But when elections came around, we'd still rely on your expertise to help us out or advise us or whatever it might be? I, I mean, all those questions are going around in my mind, so I know Roger has comments about it.
Roger?
Thank you, Chair, maybe I'll just share a little more information, so after this being discussed a few weeks ago in different settings and, and Amy and I discussing it, I did reach out to the county attorney's office, I think Commissioner Payne, you asked a question about what the process might be and, and I made a legal review request just asking them hypothetically, if the Commissioners were inclined to, to want to have an elections administrator, can, can that be done by passing a resolution, is it a simple motion, that type of thing? The response I got back from Mr. Shay, Keegan Shay, was that it's the Commissioner's decision if you, and that's why it's been done in other parts of the state as well too, Commissioners have decided to do that. And also, I'd have to go and check my notes on this, but just, I'll share this, so the legal consideration for process has to be considered and we need to be thoughtful about would be my suggestion and then the financial piece of it as well too, this kind of position, an elections administrator, you know, would be expected to perform at a high level, professional type position, so, you know, it would come at a cost, a, a substantial cost to the county to do this, so we need to be, we need to have our eyes open about that and be very clear about that. Job description would have to be developed, a pay grade, but it, it would be a substantial amount of money for the salary and the benefits and then there's just the last piece on the reporting channel too, I'd have to go and look at my notes again too, but I, I believe there are many paces where this position reports directly to the county Commissioners, that, that that's one of the structures that, that's out there, yes Commissioner?
Roger doesn't want any more work.
No, no, and I don't want to give you that impression, I just want to make sure you're aware of that, okay?
Just a, a question pops into my mind, how much experience does Connor have in elections? And is this something he could step up and we could get him extra training and he, I mean, he's worked with you for a while anyway and should know where some of the bodies are buried, what, is that an option?
It is an option, Connor, our election administrator, our election supervisor tends to handle a lot of the legal jargon as it is with, with the EA and that, that whole department, so we try to split things off, you know, I'm in the basement during an election, I handle the, the downstairs room and there are employees down there that are processing and doing resolution boards and all that and they come to me for questions and Connor's on the first floor dealing with the polling place and all the people that are coming in from the public and then of course the employees on the first floor, we have kind of a discombobulated area to do elections unfortunately, so it, it works good because we can split up and do most of those and what I can't answer, he does and sometimes what he can't answer, I do, so it works out really good, so I think he could move into that position, he's been with the county now almost four years, I think, he started in 2022 and I know I've discussed this with him a few times and I know he, he just preferred to get through the election cycles and have, you know, a presidential under his belt and things like that, so I-
But he now has four years of training under your guidance.
About three years, yeah.
So it just seems like rather than bringing somebody in,
And then fill that position.
You could use him and then refill a, a lower paying position.
I'm sure it's still going to hit your budget or my budget for a higher pay for an election administrator.
If we don't take care of it now, it could lead to lawsuits in the future, it could mean, you know, more burnout, there's a lot of negative stuff that can come up because we did not get prepared for, I mean, we are prepared for emergencies, we've got Kyle out there, you know, oh my God, what if we have an earthquake? I think this could be worse than an earthquake if we don't prepare for it. And so, and when you say, you know, we're kind of working toward it, it's not going to happen overnight, but we have to start someplace and if we have to cut back on the county- start someplace. And if we have to cut back on the county commissioners' pay so we can afford, nobody objected. Did you hear that? Well, but we need to be creative in coming up with ways. And if we can get Connor to step up and, or somebody else, but this needs to be addressed. We can't just keep kicking the can down the road. This is a problem and it has been a problem. And Tom?
You know, I, I just, I see, I, it just seems to me that there are three important areas of what Amy does that have all become extremely complex in the last three or four years. We've, we've been through this turmoil with the, with the motor vehicle department. It's, it's, and a lot of it was caused by a, a lousy computer system that they kept trying to put Band-Aids on. And now, now this new thing, new computer and all the learning that, that everybody has to do. We, we've had this debacle in the, in property taxes where we had to redo things several times and, and we had directions from the legislature that seemed to conflict and, and we chose some direction that added to the, added to the angst. And then these elections have become far more, well, they aren't, it's not just complicated, but they're adversarial. They aren't, elections like I remember as a, as a person who's always been interested in politics, you know? I, I, I think that you have got this, this nest, it's almost, it's almost like every, every part of your, of your, of your organization is far more complex than what it was when you started. And if, if we can help you by moving some of it out to where you don't have the, the terrible, you don't, aren't fighting going from one fire to another. I think we're, we can maybe make it easier for you. I, but we don't want it to be something that we, I, you know, I do, I would rather not have it something that I cram down your throat or that we cram down your throat. Are you, you feel really open to maybe trying to make a decision, making it, pull some of this apart and, and, and re-envision how we, how we deal with the election department? Is that, is that something that you're, you feel comfortable doing?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, yes, I, it's been kind of a perfect storm, I feel, for the last few years. And it's not just, you know, dealing with the computer system that was old and aging and having issues, but, you know, just trying to hire employees that want to come to work, want to have a job and want to keep a job more than three months. You know, we deal with trying to train people before they can even go to our motor vehicle windows, try to get them access, which can take up to two months at times from the state to have, just have them access the computer. Then they can finally start training. And truly half of them by six months quit because they didn't even get to do the job they were hired for. So, you know, it's, I've been feeling in a lot of places, you know, I'm, I'm really thankful I have prior knowledge of, of a lot of my departments. And I was able to jump in when we have someone, we have a, I have jumped into property tax when no one showed up for two days, you know, because of sicknesses and things. So I, you know, I'm glad I can do those types of things, but it also puts me behind on my normal duties that I need to, to take care of and to help that other department that's needing the assistance. The other thing we've dealt with is I now, I think, have had four of my supervisors change over hands. So I don't have the long-term supervisors that knew how to run those departments and all the duties that needed to be done and how to do those duties. So it's just been kind of crazy trying to keep up with everything. So I think, you know, I am open to moving the election administrator out from under me or just having it as a different person. I feel that, you know, the need is there. I don't mind being, you know, the clerk and recorder and having the election administrator under me still. I'm fine. Like I said, I perfectly fine helping with complicated spreadsheets and, you know, complicated numbers and things like that. Cause accounting's my background. So I, I enjoy that stuff. I don't mind, you know, helping if our new election administrator can't do that. Right now I do the budget for all my departments. So, you know, I, I don't mind continuing to do those types of things. But I do think that the election administrator, having more people on hand to handle the election and more people on hand to handle the questions and everything that we're getting and everything that is being demanded of us, all the changes and the processes and how long they take now. We do, we, you just can't do it with one person. You, you need more, we need more staff. It's crazy.
And it just, it just seems to me, if I might.
Yes, Tom?
That, that we've got, there's so, so much turmoil in all, all of these things that if we could really take one portion of it and take it off your plate so that you could concentrate on the other, the other two, it's, I think that might make it easier for you to solve, solve the stuff that's going on in the other, the other two.
I agree.
I, oh, one thing that came into my mind when we were talking about adding more personnel. I don't remember if it was when I first came on the commission or before that, or, but we added FTEs in the motor vehicle part. Did you remember how many came on?
When I was hired, they had already added a couple. So it was, they were starting the same week I started and that's when I was appointed. And then we added four for, across the hall, and we added a clerk, I believe, when I came in. At that time, we have the rolls of stickers and things like that, that our staff at the windows were taking time separating. So we hired a clerk so that they could do the lesser type processes, mailing out letters, tearing apart all the tabs, you know, the stickers that go on your license plates and things like that, filing and, and just kind of a lower level, less cost, but also not one that was set to like help the public. So we had that in there. And then we had the four for the four additional windows. So that moved us to 17 FTEs. I think I started with 12. And then I'm looking at removing one just because we are having a heck of a time getting people to apply and stay in that position.
What this, the, the road I'm going down with this is that sometimes more bodies is not the answer. We need to sort of rethink what we're doing with the number of bodies we have. This morning we did the public health budget. And I'm, imagine you are aware that last year's budget, Frank did some, some recommendations involving what they needed to do and they needed to cut back expenses and cut back, you know, we moved them all into the same building. So their rent wasn't so high. They did some creative reorganization so that they could, and in this case, I'm thinking so we could afford to have a designated elections administrator. And that would fit within the budget because we are limited as to how much money we have. The voters are very adamant about, by God, property taxes are too high. And one of the major cries is growth in government. And by giving more FTEs under the elections department, and I know it is necessary and I know how hard you work and this all needs to be addressed, but we do have to consider if all of a sudden, oh my God, county government is growing and the elections department is now completely out of hand and they're, those, I mean, we have concerns other than what we're dealing with. But sometimes we need to look at a different direction, go a different way. And, and as I would, I was going to comment about Drenda, her, her remarks about the changes to the health department. And she's, was saying, it's made a good difference to have those in the reorganization. And there's been a lot of good come out of it. So maybe we need to kind of work toward that. And I see Frank is over here. He's no doubt got some great ideas, but I'm really glad we're having this discussion in a public meeting, completely legal and, but it's very helpful to be able to dig into the minds of our, of the whole team. So it can be a team project. Frank?
Me too. And I think this is a absolutely vital discussion to be having. I'm just thinking mechanically, just kind of as we go forward and, and, and think about, because there's no decisions are being made today. But we have the, the June 12th meeting where we bring new requests to the commission. And that meeting, we could, this FTE as it stands, as a clerk, will, will land on there and you will act on whether or not that's a decision you want to approve or not. We can add in addition, an EA and continue kind of this discussion between now and then. And, and you guys can, by then maybe determine which one you would want, if you want to, which route you want. So you'll have it all teed up. And you can decide to do the, the clerk for next year, or you can decide to do the, the EA, or you can decide to do a reorg or however you want it to kind of, to pan out. But we can add it to that discussion and Amy can be there for, obviously for that meeting because it would be a public hearing. But the, the mechanics of it all can be brought to you. You could see the, the number because we don't have, we don't have the cost what an EA would be for the county right now. So we'd have to work through human resources. And also the, the other thing that I do after this meeting, or all of these meetings, is I start doing cash flow analysis for the county as a whole. And we can start seeing the impact of these new requests. And we can just determine what would be financially prudent for the county after those cash flows are done. So I'm, I'm not really concerned about adding an A FTE. I think that the, the general fund can generally afford one additional FTE with the growth and everything with the mill levy. I, I get a little nervous if you start doing multiples, but you know, like last year, we added one FTE to the general fund with the county attorney's office. This year we're considering another FTE for Amy's, the elections. So I think, but before I get the cart before the horse, I'd like to do these cash flow analysis. But, but part of that meeting, you'll be, you'll know exactly where my projections are landing for the end of '26 and whether or not we can sustain either one of these positions. So, and you can make that decision as to what those positions would look like.
Madam Chair and Commissioner?
Yes.
I do want to point out the clerk, that position that I'm asking for in elections, I had temps coming in doing those processes before. So I feel that the, that we'll be saving in our temporary salaries. And part of that will go to pay for that clerk position. And then I also wanted to note that the position that we moved from our motor vehicle over to property tax, I'm not sure the property tax department will stay at four FTEs because I do have one person retiring. And we have talked about the possibility of bringing that new person on as a clerk three. So I have a clerk one and I have a clerk two right now. And then I have a supervisor. We're looking at bringing in a clerk three so that they can do what the clerk two does, but also do what the supervisor does, you know, have that ability to cover either or. So when that clerk two finally retires, whether it's this coming year or the next year, I, I know it's going to be in the next few, we may or may not need to refill that position or we may be able to move it back to motor vehicle or even possibly help us fund the election administrator. But that's my vision and what I'm looking at for the future. I am trying to stay as financially responsible as I can on it. So I have been looking at those types of things to help fund those positions.
I think this discussion has been really helpful and I, I just feel better about the situation. Andy?
Roger's been waiting patiently, but I wanted to make this comment before he weighs in because I want him to think about this as well. I, I like where both of you were going. I mean, I, I like Commissioner Rolf's idea of trying to essentially take this off your plate and maybe have it being supervised under the CAO or something like that. I think that, that could be a good idea. This is all in the idea phase we're in right now. And then I liked your idea of being creative. And one of those things, just from a brainstorming position, I'm not, not saying I think this is a good idea. I just want to throw the idea out there. And if we think the EA is, is the direction we want to head and, and restructuring is the direction we want to head, could we, well, one, you know, we talked about promoting from within. Can we do that? I, I know there's some HR rules and things. Sometimes when you have a new position, you have to open it up or whatever, but can you promote with, from within? And could we possibly think about, because she was just describing that there may be a position that moves around, there may be another position that is available for adjustment later. If we created the EA, EA position, and if we were able to and thought it was a good idea or whatever, we could consider internal promotion or opening that position. And then we, we leave the supervisor position empty for now. It's still in the books, but we leave it empty for now. And, and next year or the year after, when we have, our finances are in a place where we could, then you rehire that position. But you have the EA that can play that role. You have others that could play that role. I mean, I think the clerk is really important for this year, just for the reasons already stated. But just throwing out the idea of, you know, having some internal creativeness to make it work and still move forward with the EA idea. I don't know. So.
Madam Chair.
Just for chewing on that.
Chair Commissioners, I, I really think that for us to conduct an election, you need both the supervisor and the EA present. Like I said, we split the duties and he covers the first floor, I cover the basement. And I just don't think that would be possible.
Okay.
But it's a good thought. But I, yeah, at this point, I don't think that, that's why I've also said I'm kind of like fine hanging on to it for another year just to get us through budget wise. And, you know, I'd, I hate to hit us with two FTEs in one, one year. And I do think that eventually I will have an open FTE in my property tax department if with the moving of the motor vehicle FTE to, to property tax. I, I envision probably going back to three employees. We don't really have a space for four. We're going to be really crunched for a little while, but it's really important that we have that coverage.
Okay. Roger, did you have a closing comment?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I think the important thing is what I'm taking away from this discussion is there is a desire on the part of the commissioners for us to, to look at some changes, to facilitate possibly an election administrator position for, for the office. And I'm hearing from Amy Reeves that she's agreeable to having that discussion as well. So there are a number of strategies that we can now mobilize ourselves to take a look at. And that's what we'll do in the follow-up to this conversation we just had. There's a couple of things I just wanted to point out.
Before you move on, yes, Amy is willing, one of the suggestions was that this EA would be under your direction. How do you feel about that? Is that something we should consider? Or you're saying hell no?
Oh, no, I'm certainly not saying that, Commissioner. No, I, I think, I think there's several options that we should take a look at and those should all be on the table.
Okay.
That's the way I would respond to that. The, but Commissioner Hunt-Housen alluded to this. We do have HR policies regarding promotions and demotions and reclassifications and recruitment and all of those types of things that we'll make sure that we take stock of and pay attention to. And Commissioners, also, when I talk about strategies we have, I'll, I'll give you an example. We, we can establish funding for a position, but that, but we don't have to fill that position immediately. We can take our time to evaluate, take a look at that, which I think was part of what Commissioner Hunt-Housen was alluding to. I'll give you an example, Commissioners, in our building, in planning for the past couple of years. In our building, in planning, for the past couple of years, we've been talking about that we want to be thoughtful about whether we might need to have funding in place if we find that we need to do zoning enforcement more robustly than we're doing it now. For the past couple of years, we've had a line item where we've funded $100,000 for miscellaneous payroll, just in case we need it. It's just another method. We, we haven't used it. We haven't gone down that route yet. But we could hypothetically look at, the request is for the clerk, and I, and I want to make sure we're clear about this, and please correct, please do correct me if I'm wrong. But the request before you in the budget today is for a reclassification of a motor vehicle position to an elections position. So.
To property, to a property, excuse me.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, the motor vehicle position is getting reclassified, even though I, there was some confusion when I was doing my budget, because we were doing three different positions. But the motor vehicle is being reclassified to the property tax position, and I'm asking for an FTE to cover an elections clerk.
Okay. So the net result of all of that is a request for one new FTE, not two, or two and a half, or anything like that. So, thank you. So that's the request that's before the Commissioners for the, this clerical position, this clerk position. So that's what will appear before you to consider approving when we meet on June the 12th, of course. The discussion about the election administrator, what I would suggest we do is, is let us take away from this meeting, this discussion, and discuss about what we can present to you on the 12th, okay, regarding the elections administrator. Try to put together some kind of a rough estimate of what those costs might look like. And if the Commissioners are inclined to approve funding for that, we can insert that into the budget, again, with Commissioners' approval. But there's no need to be in any kind of a rush for filling that position. We need to be very thoughtful and deliberate about all the processes that we just talked about and discussed, and work with Amy on how that would look in, in the timing as well.
In the interest of having the ability to continue this open discussion, is this, could you put something on our agenda before June 12th and present to us what ideas you, because that would be in a meeting, an open meeting, and the three county Commissioners benefit from hearing what the other ones say, and this is about the only way we can do it. So would you consider putting it on our agenda that we're going to discuss about this? Or?
Chair Payne, we could absolutely do that, if, if, if that's the desire. I just want to mention, though, that the meeting of June the 12th will be a fully posted public meeting, where the Commissioners can talk about these issues. And it's, it's only 13 days away from now.
True.
Just wanted to mention that.
Okay, thank you.
So I believe that you'll have the venue in order to have a very good conversation about this on the 12th.
Okay. It just seems to me this has been really helpful, that we're not funneling our ideas, with all due respect, through you. I mean, Andy and Tom and I, it's very healthy to talk. Thank you. Hmm, well. Oop, we got three more minutes. Amy, any words of wisdom?
Madam Chair, I'm just surprised it lasts the whole hour, so.
Well, it, but this is a really important discussion we're having. And it not only impacts you, but all the people who work for you, and all the people who are out there worrying about whether the elections are, you know, really where they need to be. So thank you for taking the time to do this. Appreciate it. Frank, thank you for helping us wade through this. And of course, Roger, we know, is always coming up with ideas. So, anything else for the good of the order?
Chair Payne, just, just quickly, just got to say, I got to recognize Amy and her crew and all the work that she does. We, I know we've been kind of recognizing her and her work already, but I want to just reemphasize it. We, we did lose a legacy employee in our accounting team, and it was, it's been a challenge to replace that person. Lots of institutional knowledge left, and it's been, but with Amy's help and, and her team really just trying to step up and getting some new staff on, we're, we're heading in the right direction. We have a new challenge of implementing a new software, accounting software, and Amy's instrumental in, in that implementation. She, just a wealth of knowledge. I know she said she likes to, her prior job was, was one of the accountants with the, with the county. And you, if you ever spend five minutes behind her desk watching her work, you definitely see a comfort in her abilities in, in the accounting world. It is, is quite impressive. And I, I just want to say thank you for all the help that you've, you've given us and the finance team, and, and you continue to do, and with the treasurer and the accounting team. And I know our, our offices work just hand in hand, and it's, and I think that I really appreciate everything you do, and I look forward to continuing to work with you.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you so much. That was very nice. And I did want to mention, too, that my staff helps all the other departments. My accounting department helps property tax when we're doing property tax payments. They help elections when we're trying to stuff envelopes. I've had motor vehicle staff stuff envelopes for elections. My records department has answered motor vehicle phone messages, and, you know, my property tax department has. So all of my team downstairs has done a wonderful job on, on supporting the other departments and the other staff with, with them all. And we couldn't, we couldn't do it without all of them chipping in and helping where they have, and, and just, just the amazing employees that they are. I just am really, really proud of them and happy that I have such a good.
And they have a strong leader.
Thank you.
Well, there endeth the discussion on the treasurer, clerk, and recorder slash elections slash guru of all things that nobody else knows how to do. Thank you, Amy. And I'm going to, is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
We've, our administrative budget, right?
Chair Payne, we actually have one more item for today, and it's the Commission and Administration budget.
Yes, but, I mean, that's perfect already. Thank you, Amy. Never mind, we will not adjourn. We just took a two-minute breather break. Greetings. We'll call this portion of the meeting to order and ask that our friend Frank, the financial guru, give us an explanation and rundown of everything related to the Commission budget.
Thank you, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Frank Cornwell, Chief Financial Officer of the Lewis and Clark County. I will be going over today, this is, it'll be fairly quick. These are not very big or complicated budgets. But, and also, just as a reminder, these, a lot of what these three budgets cover are with the Commission, Administration, and miscellaneous general fund budget, will be re-presented to you during the, the new requests meeting that we have on June 12th. So no, no decisions need to be made right now. These are just to kind of get you, start thinking about it, grease the wheels. We, we re-look at all of these again relatively soon. So fairly routine budget. We'll start with the Commission's budget. So the, the Board of Accounting Commissioners budget is accounted for in the All Purpose Fund. It includes salaries and benefits for three full-time Commissioners and, and the related operations and maintenance costs. For fiscal year 2026, the budget is, for the Commission budget, is $586,132. It's an increase of 4.05% more than the prior year's budget. It includes a 2.13 COLA, and also step increases and health plan contribution increase. This is a little bit bigger year increase due to those health plan cost increases. Minor overall increase for ONM, which is $4,505. And then your, your capital contribution is $4,500 bucks. That's pretty much for the replacement of the Yukon when, if and when that happens. Any questions on the Commission budget?
I believe you have answered questions that popped into my head.
All right. So we'll move right on to the Administration budget.
Before you do, I actually made a note here. Under fixed charges, line 5020 insurance, is this the car insurance?
5020.
Do you see the fixed charge I'm talking about?
Chair Payne, yes, I do see that. That is the, the portion of the Commission's budget that pays for our property and liability insurance to Mako. So there's an allocation that is, that is done, and then that is your portion of that insurance. So car insurance as well is covered under that. But it's, it's much more broader than that.
My next question. Do I have to express a conflict of interest concern, because my husband is the property casualty administrator for Mako?
Chair Payne, I, we, we might have to follow up with our attorneys. I don't, I, I don't know if we have a conflict there, but we can definitely look into it. It's, it's better safe than sorry.
It is.
It's good that you're, you're, you're being transparent with that.
Okay.
Moving on to the Administration's budget, the Administration budget is accounted for in the All Purpose Fund as well. It includes salaries and benefits for 11 full-time positions, including finance, personnel, and administration. The fiscal, for fiscal year 2026, the budget is $2,103,627. That's an increase of 5.48% more than last year. When it comes to personnel, it includes a 2.13% COLA, also those step increases and those health plan contribution increases. So that's, that's having a significant impact on the Administration budget increases. We, looking at over ONM, there's a $40,143 increase year over year in the total ONM costs, mostly to do with, but, potential to implementing a safety program, or just maybe just doing an analysis over safety, possible safety steps that the county would like to take. This is something that our Human Resource Department is, has seen as a potential risk that they would like to maybe be a little bit more proactive. And it's, it's $50,000 for, that we've allocated for this year. And it's, it's, and Chair Payne, I see you're looking there, that would be under the, the operating supplies line for 22-10. So you'll see, we included that in, as part of that line item.
I can see that you are reading my mind.
There you go.
Could you, could you repeat that?
I might just pass it off to Roger. This is, he might have more context here.
Oh, Chair Payne, if I could, and Commissioners, so as you know, we want to have a strong culture of safety for Lewis and Clark County and all of our departments. We have working groups, we have safety committees that meet on a regular basis. Our safety officer is located in our Human Resources Department. It's an employee by the name of Kenny Gross. So as you might have expected, in the aftermath of what happened at the courthouse and the shooting that occurred, there's been an after-action review and some investigations that have happened, and also just an opportunity to bring everyone together to talk about the safety in all of our buildings, but certainly in the city-county building and in the criminal justice building, and in the courthouse. So emanating from that was a request that came from our safety officer, that we consider requesting from the Commissioners some additional funding for safety-related programs, safety-related equipment throughout the county, and in particular, work on developing safety plans for the various county buildings that exist that we're in charge of. So that's the genesis and how this has come before you today.
Chair.
Thank you.
Chair Payne and Commissioners, just also, just because I'm a financial guy, it should, in the long run, save us on our insurance as well, as things are a little bit more proactive, people are acting more safe, we don't have bumps and bruises, things happen less, so across the county, our insurance rates will hopefully, which we haven't seen, unfortunately, but they should flatline or decrease if we're not having the claims that we potentially could if we're not being as safe. Fixed costs for Administration budget overall, we see, we've seen an increase there, because the implementation of the new accounting software, which will be coming on July 1, and that's, as you know, software isn't getting any cheaper, so that's an upgraded software. Our old software is going to sunset, and they're going to no longer support it relatively soon, so we need to transition into an upgraded service. Any questions on the Administration's budget?
I think we're, you've beaten us into submission. I think we understand.
Okay. So we have a miscellaneous budget, which does not have any personnel. The miscellaneous budget is accounted for in the department, for the, for, in this department, in the All Purpose Fund. This budget accounts for various activities in the All Purpose Fund, such as veteran burial services, mental evaluation costs, various contracts, appropriations to nonprofit agencies, contingency, and miscellaneous transfers to other funds. No personnel costs are paid from this budget, just like I said. The, for fiscal year 2026, the budget is $2,536,329. That is a decrease 14.08% than the prior year.
So it should say less instead of more.
Yeah, yeah, I'm trying. You caught me there. I'm trying to see. Yes. So primarily, most of the costs fall with, under, under ONM. We, we have added contracted services of $165,000 to pay for the implementation of the MS4 management plan. That is, including, so we got to hire a consultant to come in and develop a plan. We have to do water testing, and there's.
What is MS4?
Oh. Chair Payne and Roger might know offhand, it's the stormwater sewer plan. I'm not sure what, it's four S's, and I'm not sure what the other ones.
Okay, thank you. That, I know what that is.
It's a storm, yeah. So this, this is due to our growth in the county. We have to now follow the, the federal law of, I think it's Clean Water Act.
Thank you.
Contracted services were reduced by $300,000 after the Journey Home was purchased by Many Rivers Whole Health. Contracted services were increased for, due to a Ming Theater request of $15,000. And for contracted services, the Helena Symphony has requested an increase. And for contracted services, the Helena Symphony has requested an increase of $5,000 as well, going from $5,000 to $10,000. I think they came in this fall, this past fall, and did a presentation for the city and the county. Moving on to the fixed costs, I, I miss, uh, head, or, I guess, classified one of my, oops, descriptions there. So, where it says, reduce transfers to health insurance and property liability insurance. That's, that's a, that's a fixed cost section it usually falls under. So, if you see line 8010, transfers to other funds, that line has dropped by $570,000. That is due to no longer needing to continue to augment the, well, hopefully, the claims rate that we're experiencing within our health fund. And those costs are going to be offset now by an increase to our premiums. This is, this is an, we, we can't sustain these transfers on an annual basis. The, the general fund will dry up pretty quick. So, we, we were, we will have a longer discussion about this later on. This is, this is one of the effects of raising our rates. Hopefully, we won't, we'll continue to reduce the dependency of the health insurance pool and the property liability pool over the next few years. We, we have a plan in place to, to do so. Hopefully, it will be achieved by kind of a multi-pronged approach here. But I think with the help of our new actuary, David Turner, and, and Carrie DeRozier and her staff, is, we're moving in the right direction when it comes to our health insurance plan, our group plan. The actual, so the part that was actually listed correctly under capital for fiscal year 25, there was a temporary reduction due to the LJC floor remodel and coming under budget. So, that is now coming back on. So, we're no longer, we'll, we'll go back up to, from, from $500,000 of a transfer into our CIP, back up to 820 as a transfer, as what we normally do for the miscellaneous budget.
I've got a question here, and it's operations and maintenance, 39-10, other purchases and contract services. It's, well, okay, the actual is $400,000, and now we budgeted double that. And it looks like that's what we did last year. What, what, what is it that we are purchasing and, why is it doubled?
Chair Payne, thank you. That, that is, we still have some time left in the year to, to pay out those bills out of that line. And we're probably haven't paid off or utilized...
What bills are in that line?
Well, we, if you go to, I think it's your last page in your budget, there's a list there. I can actually bring it up on the screen here. Those are the, so, a lot of those are those nonprofit contributions that you do annually, the commission does annually. It's for, we, we provide money to, to Hats, which is with the city, East Valley Bus, CASA. We have an audit contract, HCTV, Community Foundation, miscellaneous, and then we have a miscellaneous line item. We have, we have money set aside for digitizing books. We have the symphony contribution, Montana Youth Homes.
Just a second. The symphony contribution. Okay, and they've asked for an increase. So, you've included that in?
In your budget, yes.
In the budget.
Yep. And again, this, this is something that we, we bring out to you again. We, this is something you've, I think it's a practice that you've done for many, many years, that you vote on these annually. This isn't, we don't consider these like a new request. We just, I guess, I'm going to take that back.
$5,000 is the old request. $10,000 is an increase. It's doubled.
Right. But we bring them in front of you every year as if they're new requests, every single year. This is, this is different than how we approach other line items across the county. So, you act on them individually in that June 12th meeting. So, this is your first blush of seeing them and get to kind of digest them. And, and once we meet again on June 12th, you'll, guys, you will make decisions as to whether or not to accept or approve these.
If I could jump in?
Yes, Roger.
And just build on what you're already hearing from, from Mr. Cornwell. It's just, Commissioner, what you'll see on the 12th is you'll see a list of items. And they will be requests, and there will be a column that has a recommendation from administration and finance. And then there will be a column asking for the commissioners to either approve or not approve these various requests. And that's where the determination gets made, say yes or no. So, you'll, just repeating what Frank has just told you, you'll see these requests, and you'll let us know whether you're agreeable to increasing the symphony by $5,000. Or if you're agreeable, I think we heard that the $15,000 for the Ming Theater, we heard from MBACK that possibly that funding might not be needed. So, we'll get that clarified in the next couple of days for you. But you'll, you'll, you'll have that meeting to ask questions, have the debate among yourselves, and make a determination, yes or no, on these various requests.
That concludes my presentation. Thank you, guys, for your time. If you have any questions, let me know. And as you all know, you know where my office is. Feel free to come by and...
Yeah, but he's got an escape door. Sneaked out around, goes in.
I just got to get past Marnie. She usually tries to trip me, so.
I'm looking at the second-to-last line in, in this table. 3910, administration, MS4 management plan permit fee and water quality sampling is going to cost us $165,000, and that was, was one you talked about earlier?
Correct. Yeah, we're expecting the plan itself to be around $150,000. The permit fee to be about $7,500, and the, the water quality sampling, sampling to be about $7,500 as well. So, that, that makes up that additional $15,000.
Okay, and where, can you just remind me where we saw this earlier?
So, those, if you see that total, 878,000. If you go back a couple pages, you'll see, uh, under 3910, in this, this spreadsheet, it's...
Other purchase?
Yep, other purchases, yep. And just kind of roll all the way over to the fiscal 26 column, and you'll see that's where they land.
Eight seventy-eight, four eleven.
Yep.
So...
That's the total.
Yeah. Let's hope they didn't.
All right, then. How exciting. Any questions, Mr. Andy?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. And so, Mr. Cornwell, now it's your turn.
Oh, no.
And I'm not going to cry for sure, but might make you cry. No, I'm just kidding. It is your turn for the verbal hug, you and Mr. Balt, because, and, and Misty Edwards, because this book in front of us and all of the presentations we've had the last three days would not happen without you, all three of you. But you, specifically, Mr. Cornwell, and really appreciate it. And compared to year one and year three now, it's like night and day. You were deer, deer in the headlights, and now you're, hey, master in charge, and it's good. You got your feet firmly on the ground, and I have to tell you that I get around, you know? I'm kind of the hall man and visit other departments and directors, and I've tried to build a relationship with all of them. And I have had many comments of appreciation for your work, and they're so glad you're there, and they're getting very comfortable with you and fond of how you deal with them. So, much appreciation for the work you do as well, and we wouldn't be here without you. So, thanks much. And, and same to you, Roger Doggoneit. Well, no, you, you guide the ship, and very grateful for your work. And we, we are a team.
I want to put it back at you, here, commissioners, right, and Roger as well. You have all, I, I, I'm so lucky to have you as a commission, and I really appreciate the three of you, your thoughtfulness, your, your questions, your, it's just, I'm, I'm just very lucky and very proud to be working for this county and, and, and look forward to, to where we go. Really appreciate Roger. But, uh, yeah, it's, we, we, it's been a kind of a challenging year when it comes to just the, the amount of work that we've, we've come up against. You know, we've had some turnover, which we're working through, and it's, and it's going just fine. And I think that with, with Roger's, you know, his oversight, his leadership, it's...
Diplomatic ability.
Yeah, his, yeah, his stoic hand is, is much, much appreciated. And I wouldn't be where I am after the, you know, the two and a half, or two and some year change, you know, some... This is my third presentation, so I, I think that I, this growth and my comfort up here is definitely an attribution of you, your guys' leadership, and Roger's especially. So, thank you, guys.
Thanks, Frank. Chair Payne? I know we're getting...
Yes, Roger.
I just wanted to mention a few summary items about the budget as we kind of close out here today. So, we've mentioned June the 12th is the target date that's coming up. It's going to be so important to us to kind of put some finalization on a lot of the issues. Of course, I want to thank the whole team that's been involved with the budget process, everyone involved. These good things don't happen by accident. They happen because people are dedicated and they do a good job. So, that's certainly what we've got going on. So, a big thank you there. But just to summarize, commissioners, I've had a chance to talk with Frank Cornwell about this. He's done his revenue projections. Commissioner Rolf, you mentioned it much earlier today that it looks like roughly 3% for our inflationary factor and our new growth that goes into our revenue projections. The COLA looks like it's going to be very feasible for us to do for the organization for this fiscal year. We've, we've had a chance to look at that, the 2.13%. Commissioners, I know you'll recall this, but last year, we talked about a number of strategies to deal with our challenge regarding the group health plan. And we've had a chance to brief each of you up on that, but it does involve a number of different actions, including supplementing that money. If you'll remember, our rates have not been covering our claims, to summarize. And our strategies have revolved around that. We're looking at a roughly $11 million expenditure budget to take care of our claims experience and the implementation of the permissive tax levy to the fullest extent we can implement it. And Commissioner Rolf, I know you had some questions about that just a few days ago, but we talked about that going back a year ago as being one of our strategies, along with many others, associated with the advice we're getting from the third-party subject matter expert, Turner LLC, that Frank just mentioned. So, all of that's been incorporated into our budget. A couple of other budget issues that we'll be working on in the days and weeks to come. I know, I believe, we're trying to get a compensation board meeting scheduled that's a part of our budget process each year for the compensation for elected officials. So, all of that is still ahead of us. But I, I just wanted to mention those summary items to you, commissioners, as we wrap up here today. I think it's been a good three days, and I appreciate everyone. Thank you.
Chair Payne, if I might, I just...
Go for it.
I just really appreciate this three-day, you know, bath and, I mean, it was pretty, pretty intense, a lot of different directions, but I think it's really helpful to have, to get through it in three days like this. I don't think you can do it in any less, but it has stretched out any further. This gives us a chance to kind of look at it and think it through and, 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 you know, ask some questions and see where, see where we can go. But thank you for, for a really well-presented three-day course for us. I think, I think it was well-handled.
Chair Payne, thank you, Commissioner.
Just as a way of wrapping this up, what is the budget to operate this county? How much are we talking? Hundred thousand, a hundred million?
We, it's, it's a big number. It's a, we budget typically, for the past three years, we've been over $120 million to operate the entire county. This year, I expect it to be about $125 million. However, I tell you, the, the, the growth in that number is, is not, is not a very big one. It incrementally goes up. It's, it's something that, especially after ARPA has started to phase out and we're spending that money down, it has kind of flatlined the last three years. It does sound big. It is a big number, but we also provide an enormous amount of services to this county.
Could I jump in, Commissioner, just to build a little bit on what Frank said? He answered that just excellent. There's a lot of variation in our total expenditure budget that happens year in and year out based on what Frank just said, grants, or especially large capital projects that we may be wrapping up. And just big picture, the, the biggest individual items of our budget, this comes up quite often, as you heard during the presentations, the entire expenditure budget for Public Works, roughly $38 million, and the entire expenditure budget for public safety, a little over $27 million. So, those are, those kind of stand out as, as the largest total expenditure items within our budget, and that's pretty consistent year in and year out. But there's a lot of variation that can occur, especially with expenditures for grants and wrapping up road projects and bridge projects, things of that type, and ARPA, as Frank already mentioned.
Okay. Well, thank you. That was educational. Uh-oh. Andy?
Chair Payne, just really fast, wanted to also recognize someone else who has endured this whole operation.
Endured. Come on, she loves it.
Brandy, thank you very much for your work over there and taking care of us.
That's right. Okay. So, can I adjourn this meeting? It has been moved and approved that, what? Oh, public comment. Is there any public comment on anything within the jurisdiction of this commission that is not on the agenda above? Come forward or forever hold your peace. Okay, adjourned.